Produce houses, eh, kind of stretched it a little bit. We kept nurseries open and landscapers and florists and, oh yeah, gun shops. We gotta have guns and ammo, right? We can't not have that. They're essential. So we kept.[13.61][13.61][applause] The biggest job I have is nutrition. I'm responsible for five million school meals each day. We run the school breakfast program, school lunch program. We do meals on wheels, elderly feeding programs, summer feeding programs, the list goes on and on. So when the pandemic hit, I had to figure out how to go from feeding those five million meals each day in the cafeteria to how to feed those kids at home. So we got waiver after waiver. We got real good at that. We came up with a home box lunch program, became the model for the rest of the United States and we kept your children fed, I promise. It was a little rough, but we got there. We office, I run the office of rural healthcare, so I'm in charge of rural healthcare in 191 counties across the state. When the pandemic hit, they had no income. They couldn't get any supplies. It was rough. We have 162 hospitals. I thought we were gonna lose half of them. We managed to keep every one of them open. But to get their supplies, we partnered with the Office of Emergency Management, opened up my warehouse. We brought in the masks, the hand sanitizer, the gowns. Matter of fact, we have a marketing program, was mentioned, called the Go Texan Program. And those are Texas companies, Texas manufactured products. So I contacted our distillers and asked them if they'd changed from making distilled spirits to making hand sanitizer. They did. So we brought our inspectors in, their trucks to Austin. We filled them up with mask and hand sanitizer and all that stuff. We sent them out all across rural Texas, making those deliveries to rural hospitals, nursing homes, first responders. Matter of fact, 60 Minutes did a special on us. The legislature gives us performance measures to grade us by. We have not only met, but we exceed all those performance measures. During COVID, we launched a new hemp program. Ours is one of the, you know, best, one of the model in the nation. I was first in the nation to launch a farm fresh program in our schools when I took over. Our schools weren't serving any local product. So we fixed that. We have a big mega conference. We bring the schools in, the farmers, we link all them up, have a clearinghouse. And last year where our-
Can you start?
Yeah.
Okay. It's 4:30 and we're gonna go ahead and start this meeting. So I'm calling this meeting to order. Today's Monday, February the 13th, and it is 4:30. So the first item is established quorum, Ms. Anna?
Yes. Mayor Norrie Gonzalez Garza-
Present.
Councilwoman Jessica Ortega-
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata-
Present.
Councilman Aviel Flores-
Present.
Councilman Alberto Vela-
Present.
Mayor, we've established quorum.
Okay. Next item is invocation and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Bettis?
Yes, if I can have everyone please stand. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with humility and faith. We thank you for all that you had given us and the many blessings in our lives. We ask for your guidance and strength. Show us the way and fill us with courage and wisdom. Help us to remember your love and grace and to be faithful in our service to you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated.
Okay, the next item is, were there any disclosures of conflict of interest filed?
No, ma'am.
No?
Never mind. Worked.
Okay. Next item are presentations, and the first one is the proclamation for American Heart Month.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. My name is Rick Vanessa, the Boys and Girls Club of Mission Director. Joining me are Paola Lopez and Dr. Hector Muñoz from Mission Regional Medical Center. Proclamation read as follows. I'm gonna try my best to get through this. Whereas during American Heart Month, we recommit to supporting the more than 120 million Americans living with cardiovascular condition, advancing groundbreaking and life-saving research and expanding access to affordable healthcare, prescription drugs, and healthy lifestyles. And whereas heart disease has long been the leading cause of death in the United States, claiming nearly 700,000 lives a year, nearly half of all Americans, adults, have at least one major risk factor for cardiovascular disease. From heart attacks to strokes to high blood pressure, the threat of cardiovascular disease touches almost every family in our nation. But while heart conditions can be costly and deadly, they are also often preventable with access to affordable healthcare, advancements in technology, and lifestyle changes. And whereas this is, there is so much we can do to keep advancing our fight against heart disease. As treatments and access to care improve, we can help, we can each help to raise awareness of the importance of heart health. Exercising regularly, eating well, managing weight, and avoiding smoking or vaping are proven to reduce the risk of cardiovascular disease. We can save lives by each learning the warning signs of a heart attack or stroke and consulting a doctor if we have the risk factors or symptoms. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim February 2023 as American Heart Month, and ask all the citizens of Mission to join us in recognizing and reaffirming our commitment to fighting cardiovascular disease and extending the promise of a long and healthy life across this country, proclaimed on this 13th day of February 2023.
Want to approve?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to accept the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Would you mind if I just shared just-
Oh, yes. Go ahead. Go ahead.
So January, I'm sorry, February 7, 2019, I had my heart attack. I was playing basketball, left the gym, felt every symptom that you hear about. And, you know, stubborn as I am, I went home. I argued with my wife, who was back there for about 30 minutes before I finally decided, hey, something's wrong. I made it to Mission Hospital with a couple minutes left, you know, before everything would have shut down. The care that I received there saved my life. You know, I beat the widowmaker heart attack. 12% of people survived this. Out of 100 people, only 12 lived. To this day, it used to be less. But through the advances, through healthcare, things have happened, you know, everything is changing. The physical as well as the mental part are daily battle. And it is, it is the hardest thing some days to get up. But we do it. We do it with the support of our community, our family, for me, our kids at the Boys and Girls Club, you know, with, we push and we push and we push. And I know how my story ends. And I don't know when it will, it'll happen, but the only thing I can control is what I write into this story. And I vow to you that as long as I have a breath in my, in my heart, in my lungs, and a beat in my heart, I will do my best to raise awareness for this illness and to support our community that I love, that is my heart, for as long as I live. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Good job.
Thank you.[781.12][781.12][applause]
Good afternoon, City Council members, mayor, City of Mission. On behalf of the hospital, the staff and administrators, I would like to express our sincere gratitude to Mayor Norrie Garza, City Council, and the City of Mission for inviting us to be a part of this proclamation. As your community hospital, it is important to acknowledge the importance of the ongoing fight against cardiovascular disease. To talk more about that, I brought an expert, Dr. Hector Muñoz, who's just gonna give us a few words. Thank you.
Hi, hello. Thanks for inviting me. As I was mentioning before in the proclamation, most of these heart conditions are preventable conditions. So the most important thing is for us as the community members to bring the awareness that all these heart conditions can be prevented. Some is simple things, that's controlling our blood pressure, controlling our diet. And other is through screening, the hospital, the Mission Hospital has a great program where they can offer inexpensive screening. And sometimes it's better to spend $50 on a proper screening and be sure that we'll be there for our loved ones for the rest of our life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you guys wanna come up for a picture? And Rick, can we have the family up? All right. The next item is a presentation from RGV MPO, State of the System.
Yes, ma'am. We do have Mr. Luis Diaz representing RGV MPO.
Okay.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Luis Diaz with the RGV MPO Assistant Director. I'm here today to present to you the State of the System Report. This is a collection of information and statistics of the region that range in everywhere from highways, transit, bike and pedestrian, to seaport, space, even through SpaceX. Which is, this is, this information is all put together by staff within our, our organization, the MPO. It's the first time that we do this. We plan to do this on a regular basis. And another thing is that we're gonna be part of the RGV days coming at the end of February. And we're gonna take this, and this is gonna be included to be given to all of the senators as the, as the Valley goes and does its rounds at the Capitol. So that's what I've got for you today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And yes, it is the first time that y'all do this, and it was very well put together. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is the report from our Mission Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we, the planning continues for our annual Winter Texan Fiesta that is happening on Friday, March 3rd. Doors open at 11:00 a.m. It will take place at the Leo Blasita. We're really excited. The, we will be providing free meal vouchers for the first 1,000 attendees. Our attendees are encouraged to bring lawn chairs. And this event is proudly sponsored by Mission Regional Medical Center, the City of Mission, and Winter Texan Time. So we're really excited for that. We are still seeking vendors, so anyone interested in selling some snacks on side, they're welcome to join us. We also have exhibitor booths, anybody wanting to promote their business. The audience here are the Winter Texans. And we will be unveiling the next Discover Mission T-shirt campaign. So that day, we're gonna find out the new, the new one that goes into this tradition. And next Thursday, on February 16th, at 2:00 p.m., we do have an educational workshop on the art of marketing. So any businesses wanting to learn a little bit more about marketing and how can they market their businesses, you can join us. Next Wednesday, February 21st, at 10:00 a.m., we do have another educational workshop on the HR process. So this is Human Resources for Small Businesses. And we do have our Membership Mixer. It will be held at Brick Fire Pizza. Kind reminder, it will be next Thursday, February 23rd, from 5:30 to 7:30. So everyone's encouraged to come, just come casual. They did an expansion, so if you do come and join us, we can show you guys the expansion that they did. And just a kind reminder, we do have a ribbon cutting on March 2nd for Tacoole, the 50th Milestone ribbon cutting celebration. So we're excited for that. And that's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
For the Tacoole 50th.
Yes.
What time is that at?
Tacoole is at 11:00 a.m.
At the original one on Conway?
On Conway, yes. On Conway at 11:00 a.m. I'll be sure to send you guys the details anyways.
Okay.
Thank you.
On the Tacoole-
March 2nd.
March 2nd, Thursday. So it's a day before the Winter Texan Fiesta.
Thank you.
Uh huh. We're excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the manager's updates.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We'll provide a, a project status update on our, some of our projects that we're currently working on. And we do have just some slides to show, so everybody can, so we're looking at drainage projects, the Esperanza Detention Pond, the Drainage Improvements, Gabriel Drainage Improvement, Stewart, and Drainage Improvements, and then the Lial subdivision pond. And so the first one is the Esperanza Detention Pond. If you all recall, this is the area of Inspiration. We did, we did see some amendments to this pond. This is one of the phases that we are working on for this project. As the Esperanza Drainage Project, we're 95% complete on this detention area. This is definitely gonna help the area there in that. We are projected to complete this soon. But that's also, if you go to the next slide, this, that one is the Esperanza Drainage Project, which we're at 15%. So the upgrades to this project will also connect to that detention pond we just saw. We did start this project in October. The current completion date, we're looking at August of this year. It is also at, we are winding the ditch, installing a 54-inch line, and then also doing curb and gutters in that area. So that's the Esperanza 15% complete estimated project, 5.4 million on that project. The next one, and if you all have any specific questions available to answer, if not, also-
What's that, that one with the street?
Yes, correct. Sorry, yes. Yes, so we'll be, we'll be finishing that project, that detention. The next one is the Gabriel, also, this is in that area, same vicinity project that we started in October. Current completion date, we're looking at April of this year. Cost of $2 million. We are installing 54-inch line along with 30-inch, and also currently casting some manholes that were conflicting. So we're 19% in this particular project. Moving forward, we'll continue that, that project. Next one is the Stewart Detention Pond here on just north of 495. That was a project that was done in-house. The only thing pending on this project, we're gonna fence it in with a perimeter fencing around it, and also some ripraps, which is the concrete inlets where it has the, the pipe going in, the pipe connecting to our ditch. So that's a detention. As, as we move into the next, the next slide, this is a Stewart project that, that we've seen construction along 495. We're in the area of just north of 495 on, on Stewart. We're 5% in this project. We are taking this project all the way south to the installation of 72-inch pipes and 54-inch. So as you all can see, it's a dramatic increase and change and improvement to that drainage. The area of 495, Glasscock area, on north and south, it's the Glasscock Project along with the Tulip, if you go into the next slide. That's the project. We're at 20%. This is north of 495. And we are installing 72-inch lines as well there. And so a major improvement there in that, in that area. 20% of the Tulip Drainage Project. Next, next slide. So we have quite a few capital improvement projects. We're looking at the 365 Utility Relocation, the Sherry Business Park, North Conway Sewer Project, the Basham Fire and Protection, and also the Benson Palm, Public Safety Station Number Six, City Hall Roof, the Sherry Golf Course Maintenance Building, the Lyons Park, All-Inclusive, Taylor Road, Phase One, Water Treatment Plant Filter Replacement, Sherry Road Sewer Improvements, Lift Station 13 and 14. And we'll go over those in detail here shortly. Next slide. This one is the, we're doing utility relocations. This is along Inspiration, I mean, I'm sorry, Military, south by the Ansel Duas Bridge. We are currently working on that project, the $1.2 million, and it's the relocating of utilities, both new lines and also removing existing lines in that area. We're 65% complete. This is also a major project for the Edouard County RMA, where the loop will, will go through. And so we're doing the Phase One, which is the utility relocation on that one. The next, the next slide, this is the Sherry Business Park. If you all recall, this was a, a $3 million grant that was received through our partnering with our MDC and also through the EDA. This is a project with the Kilim Development, $3.9 million. This is also for detention area for the industrial park that they're currently constructing, 85% complete of this project. We are working with the Kilim Development to, for future projects, and then also future partnerships on projects such as these. The next, the next project is the North Conway Sewer.
Randy, I'm sorry, just on the slide before-
Yes.
Was that a type of the current project completion date, November 5th, '22?
We, are we, what's the completion date on that one, J.K.?
This March.
This?
Yes. That project was the DAV, so materials-
Okay.
That was the original-
That was the original completion date. Okay. But now it's March. Okay.
Yes. And so they're at the, at the tail end of the, the construction of that project.
But yes, that was the original estimated date. Okay. Thank you.
The, the next one is the North Conway Sewer. That is 90%. If you're, if you all recall, we initiated that project last year. We are looking at extending sewer for North Conway up to our, the area where we service. And so we are 95, 90% on that project. The, the next one is the Basham Fire. That's a Basham Subdivision. We included fire hydrants that weren't available at that, at that location. And so we went ahead and did that, installed fire, and also did an overlay on that existing street to include some, some drainage swells on the side of each of the streets. So we are finishing that project. The next one is the Benson Phase Sanitary Sewer. As, as you all are aware, this is on South Inspiration, one mile south, that area in the southwest portion of our, of our city. We are partnering up, this is the Roads Development, however, we're working on the Benson Sanitary Sewer. So we are including sewer in that area, but also we do have master plan in that area through Roads Development that are currently waiting for the installation of that infrastructure to be able to develop that area. They're moving extremely fast on that project, and so we're excited about that future growth in that area. This, this also, the next slide, Alex, this shows, and I'll have Ms. Crystal Chavez from Warren Group go into detail of Public Safety Station Number Six. We're at 48%. It's, it's more, it's a higher percentage because, you know, they've been, they've been working throughout, and I'll have her go into, into details on that on a separate, a separate presentation here shortly. The next, the next project that we're working on is the reroofing project for City Hall. That is, the design is, has been completed, and so we have about to start this project. And so this is approximately five to six month project on this reroofing project. And then the next one is the Sherry Golf Course Maintenance Building. That is a 85% complete design. That is a new maintenance building that we are replacing the existing building that, that was there, the two Lyons Park renovation. The next is Lyons Park. As you all recall, we received bids and we went ahead and resolicited. We are expecting to receive bids on the 21st of this month for this project, so we can begin construction on that. We will be looking at, at the proposals once we receive- We will be looking at, at the proposals once we receive them, and, you know, bring that to council for approval. Hopefully, we can get some competitive pricing on that project. So we're scheduled on the 21st. Hopefully, we can get it in the second meeting of February, if not, first meeting of March, to be able to approve that. The next project is the Taylor Road. As you all recall, we are, this is a partnership. We are the fiduciary agents in this project with McAllen, and also the county. The first phase, we are widening Taylor Road from Expressway to Business 83. That is a project that's already in, in commencing. We are planning a groundbreaking to partner up with the City of McAllen on this project, because it is a, a project that will be a five-lane roadway going all the way to 2.5 mile line. And so this is the first phase. So we're excited about this project, $6.2 million on, on just Phase One. We're looking at 13 months of construction. The next one, we're doing some major, major improvements in our north water treatment plant. If you all, some of the city might have received low water pressure is because of, of the demand of the water. But also, we're looking at the major replacements. So you could see, this is 690,000 in filters for the major water plant that we have that services our area. So we're doing that major renovation on the north, our north plant. And then on our south plant, we're doing a major sludge removal project that is approximately 25,000 cubic yards of slush. We're looking at approximately about two days of, I mean, I'm sorry, two months of work to be able to complete that. The next, the next project, we're looking at Sherry Road Sewer Improvement Project. This is also to connect sewer in, in areas north of 495 to be able to complete that, that project, and offer the services in that area where they're not. The next project is Lift Station Improvement 3 and 13 and 14. We are working, this is part of the sewer project that we're working to be able to improve this, two lift stations, to be able to service better in, in that area. And that's along the Inspiration area. The next one is the Lift Station on Conway that's, has been completed. This also, we were able to extend water and sewer all the way to Military from our wastewater treatment plant. And then also, that project is complete, $2.2 million of, of that project. You know, as, as far as operationally here, a couple of, of things to share with the council, along with projects, is we are, you know, currently working on, you know, positive trends in, in our city as, as, just a, as an update. You know, last year, we, you know, we, we saw a, a major increase in sales tax for the year. Last year, we ended up at 15.28% overall as a, as a city, higher in the valley here, most of the cities. And so that was last year. This year, we're already on a positive trend, 5.57 with three months reporting. And so we're continuing that positive trend in sales tax. So we are extremely proud of that. A couple of things also, just to make everyone aware, as, as we entered into the new year, we started doing some utility billing audits to be able to make, to make sure that everyone was getting billed properly. And so we, we have audited all 30,000 accounts that we have. And so everyone is, is, make sure everyone is billed properly. Part of, part of also that, that we're currently working on is, is to bring in additional training for our employees. I do serve on the Public Administration Advisory Committee for South Texas College. And so we have partnered up with them to provide several trainings for all our employees, 100% of our employees, and that's at a minimal cost. We're starting with two dates in, in next month, in March, for a customer service training for all employees. So just wanted to make that, make everyone aware of that. Any specific questions? And I do have Ms. Crystal Chavez from the Warren Group, just to give you specific details on the station, Public Safety Station Number Six, so she can, she has a presentation, so the council can see the specifics on that project. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Crystal Chavez. On behalf of the Warren Group, I would like to present to you the City Public Safety Station Number Six, construction status. Thank you. This project is on a construction cost of $6,160,040. The, we have received pay applications 1 through 7, and have been reviewed and approved with a total pay of $3,313,771 with 9, 91 cents. And the remaining balance we have is $2,846,268.9. And the percentage cost completed as of today is 53.79%. And we have a total weather days reported of 21. And on our next slide, I would like to show you on the left side, there is where you see the metal stud constructed with the parapet. So that's a view on January the 18, '23. And then two weeks ago, I went to the site on February the 1st, and they have already enclosed the whole exterior facility. They applied a vapor barrier, and you see on the bottom, that's your split base white concrete masonry unit block. And so they have installed that area. So it has been quite different from now. And if I am not mistaken, this coming week, which I have my full report to go, brick should be already going up on those areas. And the light poles have been installed. Can you, on the, sorry, go back? Thank you. On the left side, you'll see that the curb gutters have been installed for the main entrance parking lot. That's where you see the, the great truck stationed, and soon they're going to apply the asphalt. Next sheet. On the left side, you have the rear of the facility. I showcased more on the fire department truck bay, but you can see a little bit of the police department rear part. But this was on January the 18, where the CMU was already, had the application of the fluid applied to prevent any water. And you'll see a little bit of the brick going up. Now, on the left, on the right side, sorry. Two weeks ago, they are almost completed with the brick and the parapet wall accent white brick as well. And they just installed the two overhead rear doors, as you see there. Our next sheet. Then on the police department parking lot, this is two weeks ago, where the, as you can see there, they did a mock-up of the applications that were installed, which is the dense glass gold and the fluid applied, which is that yellow, if you were to zoom in a little bit, in that area. That's where they did the mock-up layers to make sure that everything was installed as per our construction documents. So we went ahead and did an inspection, everything looked good. So that's why they went ahead and installed all the vapor, the fluid applied for, and ready to receive the brick. And then you have the sidewalk for the police department parking lot. And then on the right side, that's the curb and gutter that also was installed for the fire department parking space. And right now, it doesn't make a little bit of sense, but as progress goes, you'll see where the asphalt is going to be applied. Next slide. Then on the left side, you have a glimpse of the lobby area, which we have the, all the concrete masonry, masonry unit block installed for the protection of the dispatch or police report there in that area, also along with the training to prevent anything as requested by the city. And then you have that metal stud, which we're going to fur out with a nice gypsum board wall and accent paint colors there. Then on the right side, you have the interior metal studs, the metal door framing and windows as well, along with the electrical junction box and conduits, installation in progress. Next page. On the left side, you have the interior metal studs as well, and you see more of the AC ducts, also installation in progress as long, along with the fire sprinkler system, the electrical lines as well, and some of the materials there that they're using for the roughens of the plumbing to be installed in the future, around maybe this week or the following two weeks. Then we have on the right side, a closer look on the duct units, as well as the conduits and the fire sprinkler system. Next. Then we have here on the left side, you see those white PVC pipes. Those is going to be your plumbing for the restrooms. So installation is in progress. That was taken on January 18. And now, that's why you see a little bit of the outside, but now everything has been enclosed. On the right side, you have the roof drains being installed and be routed to the exterior. So those are the white pipes that you see there, along with the metal studs. Next page. And then here, you have a, the fire truck bay, the interior facing the south side, which is the rear where the overhead doors have been installed. And future, this area will have the roof application. So soon that will be, this one is about 80% completed. We just need the paint to be finished, and the, soon the foldable doors. So, so far, that's what we're up to date. I do encourage you, whenever you have the time, let me know, so I can give you a tour. These are just glimpse of the project. When you're there, you get to see the whole picture. But otherwise, it would be a long report in order to show you. But let us know, so we can schedule, have some hard hats, some vests for you, for your protection. And do you have any questions for me?
I don't have any questions. Any, anyone?
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay, but we will, we will schedule a walkthrough, maybe in, in three weeks or so?
Three weeks, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask for something? I would like to see maybe my, they can give us a presentation of all the drainage stitches that we have within our city, with pictures, and to see where we stand, and maybe the parks too. I mean, to see how we, they can do a presentation, how our parks are looking, and also facilities, see where we stand with all of our buildings. Think it'd be nice.
From staff, you mean? Yes, okay.
Yes, we can.
Okay. All right, the next item are the departmental reports that are in our packets. Are there any questions or corrections? Motion for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the departmental reports as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item is citizens' participation.
Yes, ma'am. We have Mr. Jesus Mendoza, and he is on Zoom.
Mr. Mendoza, can you hear us?
Ladies and gentlemen, can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you.
Oh, okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jesus Mendoza, and my phone is 956-583-712. I have been homebound for more than 10 years with a painful, debilitating, and life-threatening-
Mr. Mendoza, can you raise your volume? You, we cannot hear you.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, can you hear me okay?
Oh, it's a little better.
Oh, okay, okay.
There you go, now we can hear you.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you. Basically, I have been homebound for more than 10 years with a painful, debilitating, and life-threatening electro-sensitivity EHS, which was caused and aggravated by exposure to the same microwaves and radiation surveillance reaching children in school. My EHS has been recognized by federal and state agencies and by court as a physical medical condition and as a disability. I take this opportunity to say thank you to the City of Mission and to the City of Mission Police Department for advocating for students' mental health. This is an invitation to police departments, to school districts, and to health professionals to recommend that children suffering from anxiety, depression, and aggressiveness be evaluated by medical experts for the harm caused by the schools' microwaves and radiation surveillance, including electro-sensitivity EHS on the ground, that evidence on the federal record has proven that exposure to the same microwave and radiation surveillance reaching children in school caused anxiety, depression, and aggressiveness, even to adults, including teachers, firefighters, and police officers, on the ground that traditional diagnosis, medication, and confinement can aggravate further the harm caused on the children by the radiation in school, especially if the children are already electro-sensitive. Exposing children with EHS to radiation amounts to force feeding, peanuts to children suffering from peanut allergies. And on the ground that because most doctors are in the dark or in denial of the harm caused by radiation, millions of children are suffering from EHS and other harm caused by radiation. Please see, we are the evidence.org and Children's Health Defense.org. A doctor testified to the Massachusetts Legislature how if her children had not been diagnosed with EHS, her children who have spent the rest of their lives misdiagnosed, dismedicated, and mistreated for the harm caused by the micro-irradiation in school, how her son, because of his aggressiveness, who have spent the rest of his life on a mental hospital, and how her children are the tip of the iceberg of the millions of children that are now being misdiagnosed, dismedicated, and confined for the harm caused on them by the micro-irradiation in school. Most doctors do not know, or do not want to know, that the largest medical clinic for the harm caused by radiation, the Environmental Health Center, it is in Dallas, Texas, by the grace of the Lord. For these reasons, and for the reasons on the motion to recuse three federal judges posted on the case law section of J. Mendoza, at wirelesswatchblog.org, wirelesswatchblog.org, I respectfully request that children suffering from anxiety, depression, and aggressiveness be evaluated by medical experts and EHS and other harm caused by micro-irradiation. Your prompt response to this invitation can save immense pain and suffering in the lives of defenseless and unsuspecting children, as detailed herein. Respectfully, thank you again.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mendoza.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We've got Mr. Jesus Aimave.
Good afternoon, my name is Jesus Aimave. I am the founder of an animal rescue organization established here in Idalgo County. We are recognized by the Internal Revenue Service, Secretary of State, and State Comptroller. And I have a great concern. You all just recently unanimously signed a contract with Best Friends, also known as RGV Humane Society. And I did talk to the city attorney this last week. There's a lot of concern, because we have a, we've had a massive uptick in costs from rescues here in Idalgo County. We are hands-on rescue, meaning that we are with the rescues 24/7, seven days a week. We've been doing it for eight years or so. We know what's going out there. Idalgo County as a whole, the whole Rio Grande Valley as a whole, has a problem. We're concentrating on Idalgo County right now. And my concern with mission is because last week and one day alone, you guys killed, or the shelter killed, over a dozen animals that were adoptable, cats and dogs, okay, that were adoptable. We don't know what the situation is currently inside, but it's very disturbing to know that the city staff- that the city staff or employees or whatever, or this organization you guys hired, is killing the animals rather than getting them adopted out when they're healthy and friendly and adoptable. That's one of my concerns. The other concern is that we're not aware of if the city got the RFI, which I requested, the RFP and the REQ, which is prior to signing the contract, and the city attorney explained to me that it wasn't necessary because of the Texas Constitution, that's something that we are looking into. That basically request for information prior to signing the contract. The second step is a request for proposal, you know, the federal government requires an open bid, basically, a procedure in place that if it's fifty thousand dollars or more, there has to be an open bid process, which wasn't done. Well, it hasn't been confirmed. I did request a FOIA request, which I haven't gotten a response yet. I'm more or less got a response, but I need a response in writing to confirm that you guys didn't do it, okay? And of course, that a request for quotation. And if it's just one entity that you all gave this contract to, which is a one point two million dollar contract, thirty-three some thousand dollars a month, to do something just to kill the animals, and the reason I say that is because the city of Mission right now, the animal shelter, as far as I'm concerned and informed, is that they have a close intake, which means that they're not taking any more animals, which is more disturbing is if you're not taking any more animals, why are you killing the ones that you have there, you know, instead of finding them homes, you know, instead of shipping them out to other states, you know? So I don't know what's going on over there. I do know some things have gone south in the last six to nine months. The City of Mission had a no-kill shelter as per definition. There's no government agency in the nation.
Mr. Mendoza.
There's no organization in the nation.
If you wrap it up, you have, your three minutes are up, sir.
Excuse me?
Your three minutes are up.
Okay, I get my time is up, you know, but we will be back, and we're looking into this. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the next item are the public hearings. Right? We don't have anybody else to type first? That's right, okay. We're gonna move on to the public hearings. The first item is a conditional use permit on onsite consumption of alcohol at eight oh seven North Conway.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item number seven is a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is for the Winter Texan Fiesta at eight oh seven North Conway. This is currently Zone C three general business, and this is for March third, twenty twenty-three, and the applicant is the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of Conway Boulevard in Business Highway V three at Leo Placita Park. The Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce is proposing to have their Winter Texan Fiesta on March the third and would like to sell alcohol during the event. They are proposing to have fifteen to twenty vendors on the north side of the park, live music, and a bar on site. There will be constant trash pickup throughout the event. The hours of operation are twelve PM to four PM. Parking for this event will be provided east and north of the Chamber of Commerce Building and east of Planet Fitness. The zoning code requires this type of events and the sale of alcohol to be a minimum of three hundred feet separation requirement from residentially used properties. There are several residential properties within the radius, thus a waiver of the separation requirement needs to be considered, also for the amusement of entertainment. PNC and staff recommended approval, subject to waiver of the three hundred foot separation requirement from residential neighborhoods. They must comply with health and fire codes, and they must meet noise, amusement, and entertainment, and any other related codes. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this conditional use permit request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? There being none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing on this item?
To close the public hearing?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number seven, which is a conditional use permit for onsite consumption of alcohol beverages. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Are there any comments, concerns, or questions for staff?
I'm more to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that's ordinance fifty-two seventy-five. Next item.
Item number eight is a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is for Carne de Salas Nuevo León, located at twenty-two eleven East Griffin Parkway, Suite one eighty. This will be out of Lot one, Elisondo four ninety-five Plaza. It's currently Zone C three general business, and the applicant is Los Primos del Villa LLC in care of Natalie Di Barrera. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately four hundred feet west of Citrus, along the north side of Griffin Parkway. The applicant has leased a one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven square foot suite for the Carne de Salas restaurant, and would like to offer alcohol with their, with their menu, in their menu. Access to the property via thirty-foot foot access drive off of Griffin Parkway. Hours of operation proposed are Monday to Sunday from eleven AM to twelve PM. They currently have five employees. In reviewing the floor plan, they require sixteen parking spaces. There are total of ninety existing parking spaces that are shared with all the businesses in the commercial plaza. Landscaping has been provided as part of the overall commercial plaza. For the sale of alcohol, such uses needs to be three hundred feet from residential uses. There are some residents within the area, thus a waiver of separation requirement needs to be considered. PNC and staff recommended approval, subject to a two-year reevaluation, at which time the applicant will have to renew a CUP and TABC license. They must comply with all city codes and waiver of the three hundred foot separation requirement from residential uses. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit for onsite consumption at twenty-two eleven East Griffin Parkway? May I have a motion to?
A motion to approve. Second.
A motion to close the public hearing. And there's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as presented at twenty-two eleven East Griffin Parkway. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that's ordinance number fifty-two seventy-six, with a wet ordinance number fifty-two seventy-seven. Okay, next item.
Item number nine is a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is at nineteen forty-two Bar and Grill, located at four thousand one South Cherry Road, Suite three fifty. This is out of Lot one, Cherry Plantation Grove Tech Center, number two. The property is currently Zone Plan Unit Development, and the applicant is the Best Flavor Beer LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of San Mateo and Cherry Road. The applicant leased a fifteen hundred square foot suite and is proposing to open a Bar and Grill. Access to the site can be from one primary driveway to Cherry Road or from separate driveways from San Mateo or San Gabriel. In the past, this location has been used for several different, different operators, the most recent being Torta del Jack, which closed in twenty twenty. The last CUP approved for this location was on July twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen, for a period of two years. Hours of operation are Monday to Sunday from three PM to twelve AM, and Tuesday through Saturday from three PM to two AM. They're proposing to have seven to ten employees. For parking, there's a total, the restaurant or the Bar and Grill requires twenty-two parking spaces. There's a total of a hundred and eighty existing parking spaces that are shared within the businesses. For the sale of alcohol, the proposed restaurant does include a bar component. Section one fifty-six, three A of the zoning code requires a minimum separation of three hundred feet from residential properties, schools, churches, or publicly owned properties. There is a single-family residential neighborhood located within the three hundred feet. PNC and city council have waived the separation requirement in the previous CUPs. In the past, this site has been used for a restaurant, but it has also been used primarily as a bar. The applicant proposes to have hamburgers, wings, hot dogs, and salads in their menu aside from the alcohol. He is also proposing to have DJ and his establishment. Staff does not object to a two-year approval to see how the operation will work. PNC and staff recommended approval for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will need to renew his CUP and TABC license, waiver of the three hundred foot separation requirement from residential neighborhood. They must comply with all requirements from the city, from our city codes, and they must obtain a business license prior to occupancy. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item?
My name is Santiago Gonzalez. I'm from nineteen forty-two, a Bar and Grill owner, and I want to invest this in Mission of City, Mission of City, City of Mission, because I think it's a city with a much economic growth. I you said have to have a Bar and Grill here in Mission. Maybe do you remember BFB, the Best Flavor Beer? And I have the opportunity to invest another time. That's why I like this city. I live on City of Mission, and I don't know why the person of City of Mission is very nice, is very, is always, has very nice attention for us, and that's why I'd invest another time here. I don't know, you have questions?
Okay.
I thought many of you want to see.
Oh. You can, you can, yeah, you can give it to Anna, to Ms. Anna over there.
Yes, of course.
We're gonna allow anybody else to come and speak in favor or in opposition. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm more to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number nine. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, and before we call for the vote, I just have a quick question. Are we also approving the hours of operation today?
What are the hours?
Yes.
We are.
Yes.
We are approving the hours of operation.
Yes. Which is proposing Monday to Sunday from three to twelve AM, and Tuesday, Saturday from three PM to two AM.
Yes.
Unless you wanna amend.
They're requesting Monday, three to twelve, and then Tuesday to Saturday, three o'clock to two AM, and then Sunday, three o'clock to midnight. What is it surrounding? There's a bar in the corner, right?
Yes.
And what are their hours?
They close at two.
Because of two also?
And actually, their hours, I believe, are from six to two AM. They just recently amended in the previous meeting.
Okay, and we haven't had any issues with the, with those hours?
Not in that area, no.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to, to bring that up. Okay, are there any other questions before we vote? Okay, may I have, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Swerte. That's ordinance fifty-two seventy-eight.
Fifty-two seventy-eight. Thank you. Okay, next item, item ten.
Item number ten is a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window. This is for Starbucks Coffee at twenty-three fifteen North Conway Avenue, Suite number ten. This would be out of Lot one, shops at four ninety-five subdivision, unrecorded subdivision. It's currently Zone C three general business, and the applicant is Starbucks Coffee, number seven one three eight six. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately four hundred and sixty feet north of West Griffin Parkway, along the west side of Conway. The applicant has leased a two thousand three hundred and ten square foot suite from a plaza that is under construction and is proposing a Starbucks coffee shop with a drive-through service window. Access to the site is via thirty-six foot driveway along the south side of the property. The drive-through lane will be accessible from the north side of the plaza via twelve-foot access lanes, which will wrap around the building to the south. There is enough room for stacking of up to twelve vehicles. However, staff will be requiring a speed hum at the end of the drive-through to slow down traffic before the crosswalk access. Hours of operation are Monday through Sunday from five AM to nine PM. For staff, they are proposing ten to fifteen employees in different shifts. For parking, there's, they're require a total of eighteen parking spaces. There will be seventy-eight parking spaces that will be shared in common with the other businesses. There will be meeting the landscaping. The dumpster will be located on the northwest corner of the property. Staff, PNC and staff recommends approval for life review, subject to compliance with all city codes, CUP not to be transferable to others, and to acquire a business license prior to business occupancy. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit at Starbucks Coffee at twenty-three fifteen North Conway? There being none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any questions or?
I make a motion to definitely approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, and probably a third and a fourth, to approve this conditional use permit as presented for Starbucks Coffee at twenty-three fifteen North Conway. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that's ordinance number fifty-two seventy-nine. Next item.
Number, item number eleven is a conditional use permit for the drive-through service window for Rochas Restaurant, number two, located at seventeen twenty-four West Griffin Parkway. This would be lots D and E, Girasole Estates subdivision. The property is currently Zone C three general business, and the applicant is Francisco Laszlo. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located six hundred feet east of Inspiration Road on the north side of Griffin Parkway. The applicant has reopened the Rochas Restaurant, in which is to utilize the existing drive-through service window. The last CUP for the drive-through service window at this location was approved on January fifth, twenty eleven, for a period of one year. Access to the site is provided via thirty-foot access drive off of Griffin Parkway. The existing drive-through window is located on the east side of the building, which allows service for only one vehicle at a time. These vehicles will then exit through the alley and onto Salinas Drive. Hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from seven AM to two PM. They currently have six employees. For parking, there's a total of twenty-four parking spaces required. There's a total of thirty-four parking spaces existing, which they're exceeding code by ten. It is noted that there are some green areas, but no landscaping, therefore additional landscaping would be required. They must repair the six-foot solid buffer that is required. PNC and staff recommend approval for one year. To assess the operation, they must install additional landscaping. They need to repair, repair or replace the six-foot solid buffer. The dumpster must be closed at all times. CUP must meet all city codes, CUP not to be transferable to others, and the acquisition of a business license. The applicant is out of town. He has been aware of this recommendations, and he's receptive. He just needs time to comply.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the drive-through service window at Rochas Restaurant, number two? I don't see anyone approaching the podium. There's no one online, right? I'd forgotten to ask about that. Is there a motion to close?
I'm more to close the public hearing.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any questions for staff in reference to the permit?
I'm more to approve the conditional use permit.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional- There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for Rochas Restaurant Number Two as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Item number twelve is a conditional use permit for the Heart of America Carnival, located at twelve hundred East Business Highway eighty-three. This is a tract of land containing six point fifty-six acres, more or less being a part or portion of a six point seventy-nine acre tract out of Lot Twenty-Dash-Eleven, West addition to Sherland. This is for February twentieth to the twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-three. The property is currently Zon C Three General Business, and the applicant is Texas Citrus Fiesta. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located near the southeast corner of Bryan Road and Business eighty-three. Texas Citrus Fiesta organizers have been given permission to have their carnival at this location. They are proposing to set up on February the twenty, open to the public on, from February twenty-third and twenties, through the twenty-sixth, and depart on February twenty-seventh. For parking, they are proposing to accommodate at least parking for at least three hundred vehicles, two hundred on the south side and one hundred on the east side. They are proposing to have ten to fifteen rides. For, for carnivals, it is required that they be three hundred feet on, from any residential property. There are some mobile homes and townhomes in the area within the three-hundred-foot radius, thus a waiver would need to be considered. With sufficient professional security barricades, lighting, and Texas Citrus Fiesta monitoring, this event will be, again, a very successful and well-attended. Staff mailed out sixty-one notices to property owners within two hundred feet radius, and staff has not received any comments in favor against the request. PNZ and staff recommended approval, subject to waiver of the three-hundred-foot separation requirement from residential neighborhoods, installation of a perimeter fence debris stop, installation of no parking signs along Business Highway eighty-three and Bryan, portable restrooms and trash receptacles. They must meet noise, amusement, and entertainment insurance and any other related codes. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you. I believe Ms. Lisa Rivera should be on Zoom.
Online?
She's on Zoom.
On Zoom? Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My concern again is just, are there gonna be appropriate bathrooms for handicap people? Because that's a rough environment anyway, because it's not flat, but I don't know any blacktop area here in town. So my concern is just appropriate bathrooms for special population, especially wheelchair.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Lisa?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Council. That is something up to the carnival managers, but I will make sure that they do provide handicap accessibility for, for them and restrooms as well. The carnival managers, they work very well with us. Any kind of restriction or requirement that the city asks for, they usually come through. Up to this point, we've been working for them for over ten years. So any type of request such as the one that the lady has made will be covered.
Okay, all right. Do you have anything else to add?
We would sincerely appreciate it if you were to approve a carnival at that time. The carnival is willing to work in any way and with any, like I just said, with any type of requirements that you need, the carnival is willing to do that. At this time, of course, we're just giving estimates. They need to come down. They'll probably come down this week, and they will give you more precise numbers as to how many rides and parking and so on, but we do appreciate your support.
Mayor, can I ask a question today?
Yes.
Hi, Ms. Lisa, how are you? It's Jessica.
Yes, ma'am.
From looking at the map that we see that was presented to us here, my only concern is a safety concern, because some of the amusement rides are on Fontana, where you turn in, and because it's gonna be a busy time, and I know our community members are gonna be so excited to go to a carnival in Mission. That's the only thing, where you turn there to Fontana. You see how it says amusement rides at the top? I'm wondering if maybe you could meet with them to see, I mean, I don't run a carnival, right, but I would think that because that's gonna be, unless we're gonna close that road, are we, Chief? Are we gonna close that road? Or we're gonna close that road?
No.
Are we gonna close Fontana? Okay, then I'm fine. As long as that road is closed.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. It's gonna be closed, Susan? Is there a?
I mean, they might be able to relocate the rides. That's what she provided, that's the layout she provided, but people in the carnival need to actually come to this and sort of design how they want it. We might not have rides at that location.
There, okay.
But not until, say, some of these properties will have a better, a better location of where the rides will be.
But there will be a fence around the perimeter?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, we are required.
Right. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Okay, is there a motion to close?
I'm moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number twelve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any questions for staff? Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the Heart of America Carnival at twelve hundred East Business eighty-three from the dates of February twentieth to the twenty-sixth. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that's ordinance number fifty-two eighty-one.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen is a discussion and action to amend Chapter one-ten, Traffic and Vehicles, Article eight, Stopping Standing Parking Division Four, Off-Street Parking, Section one-ten through one-fifty, one-forty-six, Minimum Parking Requirements for Commercial Developments Inside and Outside the Central Business District, and the adoption of the ordinance. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. A concern has been voiced to the planning department, staff regarding the minimum standard requirements for commercial buildings. Most of the existing commercial buildings have outgrown their parking. When most of these commercial establishments were originally presented to staff, they were considered shell buildings for the majority of the time. The parking for a commercial building is based on square footage. It's not actually until the owner sells or rents out the unit that staff has an idea of the proposed use. Off-street parking is calculated based on the use, and if the use is unknown, then it's calculated based on square footage. The off-street parking requirements for commercial development inside and outside the central business district has not been amended since September fourteen of eighty-one. Staff proposed to upgrade the parking requirements for commercial developments inside and outside the central business district to be amended, to have one parking space for every two hundred square feet. After the first two hundred square feet, each additional would require an additional space. During a workshop held with the Planning and Zoning and Council on October seventeen, the consensus was to upgrade the parking requirements, but instead of being two hundred to two fifty. Currently, it's one, one parking space, actually, four hundred square feet requires four parking spaces, and then each additional four hundred requires one. So in a commercial building, a three-hundred commercial building, the current code would require eleven total parking spaces. With this proposed amendment to two fifty, as the consensus was from the Planning and Zoning and Council, is to increase it to fifty, so we're adding an additional four parking spaces to, to, to the commercial plaza, to a three thousand square foot.
Okay.
I don't know if I confused or you have any questions.
I'm only gonna have questions. Yes, okay. Is that it for your presentation? Can I ask for a public input?
Yes, this is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this, to this amendment? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Okay, is there anyone online? A motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we can ask you questions. My question is, you're, you're stating inside and outside of the central business district. Is there, is there something in our packet, and I didn't see it, that shows what exactly that is?
It will. Inside the business district is the townsite area, the, the Conway and surrounding areas. Outside would be anything outside. So this includes the whole city.
It's everything?
It, everything. The problem is the ordinance states it as inside and outside, so I have to lay who that. But it would be the whole city. Any requirement for commercial requirement, if it's based on square footage, would be amended. Instead of calculating, calculated by four hundred square feet, it would be amended to two fifty. That was the consensus from the PNZ and council. My proposal was originally two hundred, which would require a little bit of more parking spaces.
Okay, so when we're talking about off-site parking, because our downtown, basically, that's what they depend on, off-site parking, right? How would we, how are you gonna figure that requirement?
It depends on the use. Say, for example, if it's just a square footage, a building, it's gonna be by square feet.
Okay, say it's a restaurant.
It's a restaurant. Then it's one, one parking space for every three seats. Or if the square footage is, it requires a greater amount of parking spaces, then we go with a greater amount.
Okay, but this is, you're, we're talking about a building that's in the middle of, of a, of a block. Doesn't have any parking lot behind it, doesn't have any, it has a, basically a zero lot line in the front?
This, this would only be for, I know the, the old times, out-town side is very hard to add more parking to it. So this would only apply for any new commercial areas.
New commercial area?
New, any new, any new building that will be constructed.
So there's a vacant lot, say there's a vacant lot, and I'm just giving you scenarios. So vacant lot on Conway, that's gonna fall into this new?
Yes. What's existing out there, it's very hard for us to, to try to make them comply with this, because they don't have the room for it. The building is already there. But if were the, if they were to tear it down and want to reconstruct, they would need to comply with what's, would be adopted, if it's adopted to be.
Okay. Now, we would probably be able to consider variances, depending on, on the use?
That would be something that would be, if the council is inclined to open that, we can include it in our ordinance.
And can I ask, what prompt, this, this, why, why are we revisiting the?
Because if you could, most of the commercial existing Business eighty-three and Sherry, the suite there, there's a lot of restaurants, and when they apply for the, for the parking, when we see the actual parking, it's just a shell building. But you have like two, three restaurants, and they're already occupying all the existing parking. So aside from that, there have been other businesses which have outgrown their parking. They don't have enough parking. And maybe the other cities don't have that same problem that we're having here, but for the most part, a lot of our businesses don't have enough parking.
And are you seeing this more on, like, like the, like the strip centers?
Shopping, commercial plazas.
Plazas, basically?
Basically, it's more where we're seeing that concern.
In the, in the plazas?
Yes, ma'am.
That one on Sherry.
I kinda see when I go and try to buy, after six o'clock, people are working out, so all of those community members are parking there, and if you wanna go get a fruit bowl, so you're not gonna have no parking to get that.
It's mainly during the, during the lunch hour, they get packed. We, we get a lot of, they don't have enough parking, or they're end up using other businesses across the street or to access one business. So that's why we opted to revisit the parking requirements.
I, I can see the need, but I'm not sure, I don't know, I'm not totally convinced about the, how to, yeah, the solution.
Like that plaza on Sherry, right south of Business eighty-three on the west side, would you consider that having an issue about the parking space?
Yes. Especially during the lunch hour, especially during the lunch hour, it's packed. Maybe not, maybe not after, after five or six, but during the lunch hour, yes, there's not.
But is people complaining or?
Yes, that they, there's no place. We're approving restaurants, but yet they don't have the parking.
But who is complaining?
The problem also is the employees. Sometimes you need to have them not parking the, parking for the, for the customers. That's what I had to do.
Yeah. Abel, do you have any?
Oh, I just had a question. I thought, I thought downtown district had different parking requirements. You're saying it's the same even downtown?
Well, the downtown is exempt from any parking requirements. This would be for only new.
So like in the scenario, mayor gave us a vacant lot, and I don't know that there is any or anything on downtown, but.
There is at least one.
And so, so those, I mean, us understanding the, the issues we have with parking downtown, I mean, could we really, how, how are we gonna encourage development in those vacant lots when we're putting these kind of requirements on them, especially downtown? I think that's my biggest worry is just downtown. I mean, there's, if there's a way that we could.
Exclude it, maybe?
Yeah, exclude the downtown.
We could exclude the downtown area. There is a, we don't have the map here, but there, there is a map that shows the downtown area. We can exclude it from the parking requirements for any new commercial. It would only be anything outside.
And if I may add, there is a, a area that's, like Suzie mentioned, that's specifically outlined as a central business district that is exempt from the parking requirement, so that could be a, an exemption if the council wishes.
But, and but, and that area, though, is, it, it's not just Conway. That, that goes even up to like, well, it is like Francisco on, south of Business eighty-three.
We would, we would, we would exclude that from this requirement.
Okay.
We could stipulate it in the ordinance and include a copy of the map, so they'll know which section would be excluded.
Okay. Are you okay with, we all okay with that? Yeah?
I just would, I would just not like for a business owner or a future business to come into Mission and not want to, because it's such a hassle and they're, the parking and all of that stuff. I, as we all know, Mission has become very popular, even just right now. We have many businesses that wanna come to Mission, and so I just don't wanna make it tough for them to come to Mission. I would love a workshop to discuss all these bigger, I mean, I know that with Mr. Terazas, he took us around in a van to see all the drainage issues. Some of us have very busy lives with working, and so we don't see what you all see during lunch and all that stuff. I would like maybe to go around town to see exactly what she's talking about during those times, to see the needs of what our city has, and we can work like that. It's just my opinion.
And maybe like a lot during lunchtime, something like before we can see more of the action. Yeah, I feel the same here. I feel like I'm not ready to make a decision. I, I really wanna make sure that we look up for the business community and I would rather wait.
And, and Mayor, if I may, I mean, I was part of the committee, so I'm not, I'm not trying to throw staff under the bus or anything, but I mean, I, I just, I just think that, I agree that we need to kind of make sure that we're doing the right thing, because it is a big step, and it is gonna hinder development to some extent, and so we just.
When did we meet?
I was, it was in October.
It was in October, but we did.
No, yeah, but it's a little bit, you forget everything by now.
Okay.
I'd rather just, can I make a motion to table?
Yes, yes.
I would like to make a motion to table the item and request that we have a workshop.
Second.
As Mr. Panetta, if, if we table, we'll see it in the next city council meeting, where we can take no action.
No, no action, because we won't.
So then, so we won't have a retreat?
I'm saying my second, and second is no action.
Yes.
Okay, there's a, do I need a motion?
No, it's, it's just no action.
Yeah.
It'll be removed, and we'll, we'll set up a workshop, and then I'll bring this back when the workshop's finished.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next item?
Workshop on May thirty-seven or something.
That's a probably a good idea. That's one of the parking issues. That's one of the parking issues. The next item is item number fourteen, is a discussion and action to amend the AOP Permanent Open Space District ordinance. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. This is another one that we considered during the workshop, where we now, on any current property, anybody proposing a rezoning on an agricultural open property permanent structure, they are required to submit a feasibility study. And there are some citizens that feel that this should only be imposed to developments with, that are developing substantial amount of acreage for a subdivision. So some of the requests staff has received from property owners is that if they would consider properties less than one acre or less than ten thousand square feet, that they would impose, not impose the feasibility study, but all the other requirements as far as taking it away from the flood zone. All of those other requirements would still be imposed. So during the workshop that was held in October, you might not, probably not remember, the consensus was that the city was receptive to considering only those homes, only when they were for one home, and the lot was less than an acre or less than ten thousand square feet in depth, they would not be requiring the feasibility study, but would require that removing it from a flood zone or any other requirement. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the amendment? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the amendment that presented? May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number fourteen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any questions for staff?
I just have one, mayor, if I may. Just, and I know I asked this too, but in relation to the homestead exemption, how is this related to the homestead exemption? Is it related at all to the homestead exemption?
Yes and no. Yes, because one of the requirements of the homestead is if they want to construct a home, they have to rezon the property. So if they have to rezon the property before they even rezon, they have to do the feasibility study. If they don't comply with that, they can't rezon the property. They can't comply, they can apply for the homestead exemption.
And so now they could, if it's less than ten thousand square feet, if we pass this?
Yes. They could apply. I mean, and they would be allowed to apply for the rezoning in order to match the homestead with a proper zoning.
Got it.
Any other questions?
So Suzie, so how much does it cost for a feasibility study? I mean, obviously, people don't want it because, is it pricey?
Depending on the engineer, it is pricey. It's an in-depth study of drainage, of everything of the land. And honestly, for somebody who's constructing a home, or really, most of the time, the investment, it's not worth it. It's more than what they're going to pay if they do a wood frame home.
But we still have some sort of drainage review on this, right?
Yes.
Right, okay, right, JP? Yes, okay.
And actually, all of this was consensus. We, before we even brought it, we checked with the engineer, with legal at that time, to see if it was something that was worth coming to us because we have gotten about three or four different property owners that have acreage. They're just going to be constructing one home, and this is, I mean, I understand the need or the expense, making the expense, if I was doing like a subdivision or I was doing more acreage, but for a home, they feel it's excessive.
Yeah, I think the purpose really for that, for our initial thought was just to make sure that the other areas, the larger areas weren't impacted, or, so, okay. So is there a motion?
Would you, just that, you, the city engineer, and Randy, your recommendations?
And the attorney?
Well, I don't make recommendations, but I don't have any legal issues with it.
I'll move for approval. Of staff. All right, there's a motion and a second to amend the Permanent Open Space District and adopt ordinance number fifty-two eighty-two. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item.
Item number fifteen is a discussion and action to adopt the special use permit. If the council is inclined, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. A direction was given to, directive was given to staff to work on an ordinance that would give the city manager the authority to approve special use request to help expedite the process on special events. The events that would be considered under this type of permit would be city-sponsored events, pop-up markets, tent sales, one-day event, carnivals, parades, fun fair, car shows, concerts. The applicants would still need to submit the proposed dates of operation, a site plan showing, parking requirements, but it would still need to be in compliance with city code. But in this case, some of them would not need to come to the planning and zoning and to the council. It would be especially items that they're only going to have one day, and not having to wait the five-week process that we normally have to for a conditional use permit. Of course, the ones that require the sale of alcohol would still require a conditional use permit, so those would still have to come in. But for other events, it would be up to city manager to approve. Now, one of the most, I worked on a criteria for pop-up markets that has been a request that we've been seeing throughout our city. We don't have a permit for it, but we have a lot of requests in it. And the concern would be, or the criteria would be, that they must be located on a general commercial zone or higher. Any pop-up markets located or operate on a property that runs zoning district designated residential or R two may not operate after nine AM. No more than one permit per month per location. This is if they're in a shopping center and one of them gets a permit. It would be one per location. If you have, otherwise, you're going to have a different permit every other week for a different tenant. So it would be per location. The fees to be determined by the number of vendors. If it's one to fifteen vendors, it would be fifty dollars. If it's sixteen to thirty vendors, it would be seventy-five. And over thirty vendors would be one hundred. If a proposed pop-up market is within any multi-tenant plaza, then the applicant must first obtain written consent of approval from all vendors of said plaza before a permit is issued. They must obtain, sign letters from all property owners and tenants agreeing to use the commercial parking lot for the sale. No permit will be issued if there is insufficient parking due to the size of the temporary structure or any incidental staging area. While the main use of any designated plaza or location is open for business, not more than twenty-five percent of the total parking lot may be used for the purpose of the pop-up market. All other times, no more than thirty-three percent of the total parking area may be used for the pop-up market. All tenants, stalls and merchandise must be immediately removed from the property upon expiration of the pop-up market. Now, city manager shall have the authority to immediately revoke, suspend, or deny a permit if the applicant or permit holder has violated or failed to meet any of the provisions of this criteria. If the applicant or holder violated or failed to meet the conditions of the permit, any required licenses have been suspended, revoked, or canceled. The permitting has violated any federal, state, or city law regulation. The city manager, chief of police, fire chief, has determined that the pop-up market would pose a serious threat to the public health, safety, and welfare, and the applicant has made false statement of material fact on the application for the pop-up market. And the penalty, if they don't comply and they have a proper market without obtaining a permit, would be set by the municipal judge. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item?
Good afternoon, mayor and council member. My name is Alex Trios, and this is Mina Sais.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm coming here on behalf of my daughter Erica Sais, she's out of town, on behalf of TNA Treasures and Hidden Treasures on Bryan Road, yes, and concerning on the pop-up market.
My first question on this is, is this once a month or every three months for this?
I think the proposal is?
It's once a month? Okay, that's perfect. My other concern on this is this will also include indoor markets as well or only outdoor tent sale markets?
Just outdoor, my understanding, right?
Just outdoor, and then we would just need to file for the permits and pay the according, depending on the whole plaza, right? On the number of vendors. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, because I went to go pay the permit, and they told me that we didn't have to pay it. So I need to know, do we have to pay the permit or not?
Currently, there is no permit. That's what we're trying to establish. We don't have a permit. So we're trying to adopt something so we can enforce. I believe right now, the confusion is with the tent sale. That's what we're going to be seeing the minute.
The next one, right.
A lot of people are using a tent sale permit to have pop-ups. The tent sale is intended for the tenant to be able to have their own merchandise, not to invite vendors, and that's what was happening. So that's why we are trying to have a permit to be able to allow potential vendors. Because most of the people charge to come and sell at their location, and they're not willing that well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And what do you call it, that Suzie, what do you call that? Pop-up?
It's a pop-up market.
Okay, is there anyone here, anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number fifteen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other questions for staff?
Yes, mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
Okay, so I've seen two different types of pop-up tents. So when they're in a private property and they pay for having whatever event that they want to have in private property, the city of Mission can't go and say, if they have a Market Days festival, because it's on private property now?
If it's an event center that you're having, let's say, for example, these is acres. I've seen those. It is my understanding, we have no right to tell them what type of event they could have if they rent a venue to have that event.
What about for food, though, for a health permit?
Right now, we're not requiring anything. I don't know if on behalf of the health department, they require anything. But as far as for planning, we don't check for the food. It would have to come from health. And I don't know if they do have a requirement or not. I would imagine that maybe for them to have a food hunger's permit, that would be required.
And I think that that is what we need to really communicate with both departments with these type of pop-up events, because they're happening more regularly. And I've been to them myself, and I see that there's about ten vendors there. And, I mean, I don't know if they went to the classes, if they have a permit or what have you. So we need to work on that with the health department. And my second question is, whenever we have the pop-up tents at, let's say, a local restaurant, if that restaurant is going to get the vendors, I don't know, let's just say they wanted to have something this past weekend for Valentine's Day. So they're going to have about ten vendors there, and some of them are going to be food. Will they have to, Randy's going to approve it because it says here city manager's approval, but will we have to send them there to pay something also? Or will the restaurant owner, having that event, be in charge of that?
What we could do is include it as part of the criteria that they need to meet. Anybody having a vendor that is going to contain food must require a health permit, must have a health permit. Now, I don't know if, maybe, I need clarification from the attorney, if for the people that are renting a venue, can we do that? Because in this case, we would need to get with the different venues or event centers to alert them. You know what, if you're having this type of event and they're going to be having food, they're going to require a health permit.
So couldn't we just do it like as an umbrella? Let's say if a restaurant owner is going to be doing a pop-up tent event, a Market Days or what have you on that weekend, wouldn't it be easier for them just to have one permit with the health department and with you all that will encompass everybody that's going to be selling there?
Most of the businesses, most of the businesses that sell food already have a, they have a business license and they have a health permit. It's the people that actually, or the vendors that go actually out there, not all of them have a health permit. So, but with this requirement, and that's criteria, and that's why we're here. I mean, we don't have any, we didn't have that, but we can include it so that we can, they can, any vendor selling food is not going to require a health permit, and that's going to be one of the requirement. And he will be able to know whether they have it or not. They're going to, they need to provide a listing of the vendors, and if somebody's going to sell food, well, hey, you know what, make sure they provide their health permit or their health card. At least we know that.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, but just, I would like to have no action on this. And maybe discuss it at the same time that we discuss the other item. Only because I, you know, we went a little bit, this is really, really broad to include carnivals, parades, fun fairs, concerts, and car shows. So that's, those are, so basically what we would be saying, we would be not having any type of notification for these types of events. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, so no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not okay with not having notification to some of these events. So if, if, we could just have no action on that, and then just discuss it further in another workshop. Okay? So, no action on item number fifteen?
Mayor, if I could add, I would just like Suzie to come prepared with like a list of different community members or businesses that have come to try to do those type of events so we can see like what we're looking at in reference to that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm like the mayor, maybe the only way that I would approve it is you all have like a committee that will review it. Like, for example, you, public safety, I mean, or to make sure, I mean, I think that will help us a lot with the liability. Get the city attorney, I mean, to check parking, to make sure that handy ADA compliance and all of those things. That's the only way that I would approve something. I mean, I mean, with all respect to Randy, but if you have more set of eyes that can review the request, like, for example, like the mayor said, like the fun carnivals and all that. I mean, it's just, I think the more people, that's the only way so you can verify what all the municipalities are doing.
Sure. Okay. All right, next item?
Item number sixteen is a discussion and action to amend the garage sale ordinance, amending chapter eighty-two, sales, article two, garage, porch, yard, clubhouse, recreational hall, rummage, tent, and estate sales, section eighty-two dash thirty-six, term of a garage sale permit, section eighty-two dash thirty-seven, maximum number of garage sales. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. Again, planning and zoning has received concerns in regards, in regards to the number of tent sales that are permitted. Currently, our current ordinance allows one tent sale every six months. The request was that they allow one tent sale every month. That was the petition. During the work, joint work job that we held in October, the consensus was that we allow one tent sale every three months, similar to the garage sale ordinance. And this is by, per location, not by tenant. That's the concern that we had, because then everybody else was going to come getting a permit. The other one was the number of days estate sales are allowed. Currently, the estate sales are only two days. Currently, the estate sales are only two days, and the concern was that if we could extend it to at least four days instead of the two, which would be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, versus Saturday and Sunday. The other, the other change would be the number of days allowed for a clubhouse or recreational hall, park sale. Currently, we only allow one, one, one throughout the year, so this one would allow, would allow, I'm sorry, the, the one for the clubhouses allowed one every... Two, two per year, one every six months, similar to the tent sale. So we wanted to allow, keep them the same, but instead of for one day, to allow them at least three. So it would be, it would be two a year, but for three days, one no more than three days. These are the only changes that we would be changing to the garage sale ordinance. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Benison, fifteen miller. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My concern is about the garage sales, two days is not good enough, we need four, and then we need to be consistent when it rains, because the first day you can set up, and the second day it rains, and then, ah, well, we go back and some family members will have to get rid of items and go back to the city and say, ah, well, you used one day, and we're going... So we need to be consistent about that, because if it does, if there is a rain out, we'd be given more time to work. Thank you. But I am for, you know, positive of that.
If I make a garage sales, we're not changing the actual garage sale. All we're doing is the tent sale, estate sale, and the clubhouse. The garage sale currently is, is four days every, every three months, and it could be two consecutive weekends or four consecutive days. But the garage sale is not changing. If it rains, normally what we do is we ask that they bring the permit so that we could give them credit for an additional day. That's normally what we ask.
Okay.
We try to work with it.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm want to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any questions, or is there a preference on this item?
Mayor, I have a question, if I may, just...
Yes.
Just for, because you went in length as far as pop-up markets, and then the tent sales, that would be for an individual tenant, for example, or what is, what is the difference between a pop-up and a tent?
A tent sale would be like Melrose. They have their merchandise and they want to put a tent sale outside their property. They can, there is the same merchandise that they sell. It's, it's the same thing when they're in a plaza. The tenants that are within the plaza can't put a tent to sell their merchandise outside. The difference between that and a pop-up market is that the people were coming to get a tent sale permit, but they're inviting other people from other places to have their, their merchandise at that location. That's, that's the difference.
To have a market.
Yes, so that's why, that would be more of a pop-up market, and for that, we don't have a permit currently.
And for the tent sale, if the actual person that is in business wants to put like a tent, they can do it when they want.
They would just, they would just apply for a permit, but for the tent sale, what we require is that if they're in a, in a shopping strip, for the, for them to get written permission from all the tenants, because they're going to be utilizing their parking, and we want to make sure everybody's going to be aware, that way they have their approval and they're, and they're advising them that, you know what, you might have limited parking because we're going to be utilizing part of the parking to put the merchandise, to display the merchandise.
And this is the one that's every three months? One every three months?
Well, that's what we're proposing currently, is one every six. So it's two a year. Currently, the tent sale is one, once, once every six months. What we're proposing, the, the original request was to have one a month, but when we met in the workshop, the consensus was to allow, similar to a garage sale, every, one every three months. So you would be allowed, instead of two, four.
But Susie, do these people, like you said, I'm sorry to say, but I'm just going to do the example that you said, Melrose, do they really come and get a permit?
A lot of them do.
They do have that?
They do. They have, they have come into...
So would they mind us putting this? Like telling them how many times they can do that? Like right now, you're saying, how, how often can they?
Currently, currently, the ordinance is once every six months.
So we're giving them more opportunity with this?
We're, we're giving them two more, two more times a year.
Can we put this in the workshop as well?
Sure.
Yeah, I was just going to say no action.
No action.
Well, I was going to suggest, don't wait too long to bring this, I mean, I don't know, I know you're younger than me, but young forgive.
Yeah, my, my, my thought would be, if you're going to allow three or four, six, then, you know, could you do it, could you come one time to City Hall and say, I'm going to have six sales this year? Can I have that permit for six sales?
And they can pick.
We can, maybe, that's how the council want it.
I would, I would like to kind of start thinking about something like that, just to kind of facilitate the permit process.
For them to have a listing of how many sales they want to have.
Right, yeah, okay. All right, no action on this item as well, so that is, concludes our public hearing. We already closed on for that item, right?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're going to go to the consent agenda. And item number seventeen on the consent agenda is approval of minutes for regular meeting, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, acknowledgement of receipt of minutes for Mission Economic Development Corporation, November twenty-ninth, Mission Redevelopment Authority Board for October twenty-fifth and January fourth, Mission Education Development Council for November twenty-ninth, Mission Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone for October twenty-fifth and January fourth, Mission Economic Development Authority for November twenty-ninth. Number nineteen is approval of resolution number eighteen thirteen, supporting the proposed Anacua Village application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. Number twenty is authorization to award bid for the purchase of waterline maintenance supplies for the Public Works Department. Number twenty-one is authorization to purchase tires from Southern Tire Mart via buy board contract six-three, six dash twenty-one. Number twenty-two is authorization to purchase five sixty residential, five hundred and sixty residential refuse cards from Auto Environmental Systems via contract RC zero-one dash twenty-one. Number twenty-three is authorization to purchase a twenty cubic yard standard duty roll-off container by, via buy board contract five nine-nine dash nineteen. Number twenty-four is authorization, authorize Mission Fire Department to accept donation of body and rescue equipment from Rio Grande Juice Company. Number twenty-five is approval of resolution number eighteen fourteen, authorizing the submittal of a grant application for the FY twenty twenty-four Crime Stoppers Assistance Fund to the Office of the Governor. Number twenty-six is agreement for interim administrative services with Texas Mission Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number One. Number twenty-seven is authorization to allow the purchase of a firearm to honorably retired peace officer Gabriel Suniga. Number twenty-eight is authorized to allow the purchase of a firearm to honorably retired peace officer Gracie Guerrero. Number twenty-nine is authorization to enter into memorandum of understanding between the Office of the Criminal District Attorney of Hidalgo and the City of Mission Police Department regarding seized contraband pursuant to chapter fifty-nine of the Texas Code of Criminal Procedures. Number thirty is authorization to purchase twenty-three bullet-resistant shields from Galls via buy board contract six seven zero dash twenty-two. And number thirty-one is authorization to solicit for bids for right-of-way mowing and maintenance services. And lastly is item number thirty-two, authorization to extend one-year renewal option for liquid polymer chemical with polystyrene ink for Public Works Department North and South Water Treatment Plants. Is there anything that...
Mayor, I would like to pull item number nineteen, just because I know the director has been patiently waiting, and I'd like to hear your wonderful news, where the housing authority is going.
Okay.
And I will line number twenty-six, twenty-nine, and thirty-one.
Twenty-six, twenty-nine, oh, thirty-one. Okay. Is there anything else? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'm want to approve the consent agenda with the exception of number nineteen, twenty-six, twenty-nine, and thirty-one.
Second. All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of number nineteen, twenty-six, twenty-nine, and thirty-one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero, so item number nineteen.
Yes, Mayor, Council, we do have Mr. Arnold Padilla here with us today, the Executive Director for the Housing Authority, and this is approval of resolution supporting the proposed Anacua Village application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. This is the application for the twenty twenty-three competitive nine percent housing tax credit, and this resolution will confirm the city's support of the proposed Anacua Village application. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, and thank you, Ms. Jessica, for the opportunity to come up here and present for the Housing Authority. As, as you all have known for the last year and a half, pretty much, we've been kind of working through dilemmas with the Housing Authority as far as trying to fix the product that we had that is in repair order, and then there's a lot of product that we have that is unfortunately has outlived its life probably twenty years ago. So these are the products that we're currently trying to find a way to replace. The eighty-unit Anacua development, which is a multifamily development built in nineteen fifty-two, seventy years old already, has outlived its life, and we currently submitted an application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. We submitted preliminary application on January the third, based on our assessment, and we do have professionals that we do this quite often, we've done it in McAllen. Victor? We've known each other from working in McAllen. We, we know where we sit currently, and frankly, our application is an award. It is an award position. The award does not happen until July, but it is a competitive application. What we do is we measure the competitiveness of all the other applications that were submitted within the same realm of what we call at-risk. In this particular case, Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, who is the caretaker for the state to distribute internal revenue credits, has a section of two different types of credits, credits that are called at-risk, those that are made and designed to be able to replace current affordable units that are already on ground, that have, such as this, outlived their life, and then they have standard competitive applications where you just are wanting to build affordable units. In our particular case, we are going after what's two million dollars a year for ten years, which equates to twenty million dollars of tax credit. The credit is selling right now on the market about eighty-nine cents. It's based on the economy. The people who buy these credits are generally large investors who are looking for a relax and their taxes paid. So if people are making a lot of money, they pay you really good for tax credits, when people are not making as much money, the credit seems to sell for a little bit less. Over the years, we've seen credits sell for as high as a dollar three. That's when, when the economy is really flourishing and everybody's making. When the economy is not doing so well, we tend to see it now. There has been times when the credit has just completely failed, no one's looking. That's happened a couple of times. Thankfully, there is a market right now, it is not as high as we would like, but obviously eighty-nine cents on the dollar would produce about seventeen, seventeen million eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars of free funding to be able to replace the development. The development is estimated to be between either one hundred and twenty-eight to one hundred and thirty-eight new units. These units are going to be market and affordable units. We are looking at a three-story structure. We are currently in design, or preliminary design, and preliminary financial makeup. The application is due the first of March. Part of the, what we did is submit a preliminary, our full application goes into March first. The full application carries a support letter from the city, a support letter from local nonprofits, it goes in with a feasibility study, it goes in, there's about a hundred, a little close to a hundred thousand dollars invested to submit an actual application. So normally, the only time you ever really submit an application is when you know you're in a competitive position. We know, based on where we're at right now, that we're either in second or third place. It will award five positions, so we feel very comfortable that the position we're in will see an award. Now, it happened in July. In combination with that is the process of getting a HUD approval for the disposition of the current site. That application was submitted last October. I was actually on the phone today with the reviewer. We were expecting around mid-February to get the approval. He says he's about ten days away from his final, final review, but everything looks positive, there isn't anything. We've, we've run into dilemmas in the process, and a lot to do is just, just the way this Housing Authority uploaded its information, there's a lot of corrective actions that have to be taken, a lot of confusion, even from the HUD perspective, they were like, yeah, takes a lot of work. So there's been a lot of man-hours, a lot of effort to get us to where we're at, but we are very pleased to inform you that we're in a position to do what's needed for this community. Our anticipation is that if we get awarded in July, as we see is going to occur, we'll start, and once we get the HUD approval for the disposition, we'll start relocating families, and hopefully you'll see a groundbreaking sometime around December to January of, December of twenty-three or January of twenty-four, with the completion. It's about thirteen to sixteen months of construction, so we're probably going to be falling into March, April, or May of twenty twenty-five when we start occupying. But our work is not done. Our next step, next year, is to start looking at the replacement of a seventy-two unit complex, which is elderly only, which is just the same demise that the current one is. This one was just a priority because it was much, much worse, but we do have another project to go through, and again, we're already working on that application for the twenty-four cycle, hoping that we will have a competitive application. Generally, we'll review before we're at. So again, we thank you for the support. I thank the Mayor Commissioners she's given me, they're very supportive, it's a very cohesive group, a lot of work is getting done, everybody's on the same page, and we're all going down the same avenue together, and it's a productive avenue. So we appreciate the help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay. Is there a motion? I make a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve resolution number eighteen thirteen, supporting the proposed Anacua Village application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. And congratulations, this is a great project. Thank you. Okay, the next item is item number twenty-six.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item twenty-six is the agreement of interim administrative services from, with Mission Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number One, which is the TERS and the City of Mission, and the Executive Director of the TERS resigned at the end of December, and so the, the city has been part of the TERS projects and their organization, and so the TERS Board has determined interim administrative services for the city to do temporary oversight of one hundred and twenty days, and that's what this agreement is for. It is also to appoint, the TERS Board felt... It is also to appoint the TERS Board felt that it was something that it was necessary to be done in the transition until they decide what the permanent... what the direction is for the TERS Board at this point, and so they recommended myself and city employees to provide all required interim administrative services for the TERS until a permanent selection can be made, and the TERS will compensate the City of Mission the same fee that was being compensated for the Executive Director at the time of six thousand per month during the term of the agreement and cost as provided of said services. The scope of the work for this is... Do you have a hard copy of it? I'll provide the scope of work that is... And so what the scope of work for the agreement again is to assign staff to this to do a manageable oversight of the documents related to the development projects, prepare all documents necessary for Texas jurisdictions, public officials, and staff related to any TERS project plan, communicate liaisons on all TERS matters with the City of Mission, Mayor and City Council of the City of Mission, coordinate and prepare reports required by governing laws and ordinances, coordinate the preparation and engineering design cost estimates for infrastructure improvement projects by independent contractors, oversee and implement the reinvestment zone financial plan for the city and the TERS Board, facilitate all public hearings on behalf of the TERS with the City of Mission and other taxing entities, facilitate meetings with the general public regarding the TERS, recommend policy matters to the TERS Board of Directors, assist the TERS Board of Directors in drafting project plans, reinvestment zone financing plans, approval by the Board and the Mission City Council, assist the City of Mission and the TERS in drafting participation agreements with other taxing entities, assist the TERS in preparation negotiations of development agreements amongst the TERS and City of Mission and other entities, manage the TERS revenue accounts, process all required payments, maintain accounting of the public funds received by the TERS, assist with preparation of required audits of the TERS, the preparation of their budget and submission to the City of Mission, assist with the procedural requirements related to tax entities, provide management services and all other matters related to... So as that is the project work right now, currently myself, Mr. JP, Assistant City Manager, is currently overseeing the projects. I am assisting with the... They're looking at a potential bond issue, and I'm assisting with them, and we're soliciting for... Solicitations for our financial advisor for the TERS, and also finance staff is assisting with their yearly audit along with their bookkeeper that they have, and also for their financial statements as well. And so we're asking for approval of the interim agreement. Again, this is for one-hundred-and-twenty days. At that point, the Board will decide what their permanent direction is.
So what's doing their bookkeeping? Do they have somebody in-house?
Yeah, no, sir. They do have a contract for a bookkeeper outside, independent bookkeeper.
So our city was not assisting with that?
We currently assist with the payment process, any pay requests for the projects. We process them through here. They are recorded independently through the bookkeeper. However, we submit reimbursements and so forth through our finance staff. Right now, because of this transition, we have been much involved because of that, and so we're working with the bookkeeper to facilitate the audit, which is currently underway, and then also the budget and also projects.
Who is that bookkeeper?
It's Mr. Joe Murray. He's a bookkeeper that they hire on a contract. It's a yearly contract.
Okay. So our staff will be continue assisting?
Yes, sir. We will be for the next one-hundred-and-twenty days. However, we will... We have been assisting before this agreement, however, because they don't have an Executive Director in place. That was a requirement and felt... The Board felt that that was a... To have a seamless transition during this interim process, but we will continue assisting them as... Even if they decide a permanent Executive Director. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the agreement for interim administrative services with the Mission Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you.
And the next item is number twenty-nine.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Chief Torres, Mission Police Department. We're asking authorization to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Office of the Criminal District Attorney of Hidalgo and the City of Mission Police Department regarding seized contraband pursuant to Chapter fifty-nine of the Texas Code of Criminal Procedures. The purpose of the MOU is to define the relationship between the Criminal District Attorney's Office and the Mission Police Department regarding seized contraband pursuant to Chapter fifty-nine of the Texas Code of Criminal Procedures. Article fifty-nine oh-six of the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure mandates that a local agreement be reached between the State Attorney, acting as the agent of the state, and the law enforcement agency to effect the disposition of contraband forfeited to the state. MOU is just an update as a result of having a new District Attorney's Office... District Attorney. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I just wanted to know what was the change.
Move for approval?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the authorization to enter into a MOU with the Criminal District Attorney of Hidalgo and the City of Mission Police Department. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And number thirty-one.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I have before you item number thirty-one, which is the authorization to solicit bids for right-of-way mowing and maintenance services. Staff is seeking authorization to solicit bids for mowing, bed maintenance, tree trimming, and litter debris removal and city rights aways. Services will include all supervision, labor, materials, supplies, tools, and equipment necessary for cleaning, clearing, trimming, loading, and dispose of all trash, debris, rubbish, organic debris, municipal solid waste, special waste, and tires for the mowing of all grasses, weeds, trimming of underbrush, and to provide bed maintenance and litter pickup when needed. We'll also be having them trim tree branches and sucker growth below eight foot, and also trimming the palm fronds and seed branches of palm trees with a minimum height of eight trunk foot. Staff and City Manager recommend authorization.
Well, but who do we have doing this right now?
Pardon?
Who's doing the work right now?
South Texas Landscapes. They're doing a very good job. He was extremely low when he bid two years ago, and he took a gamble and figured he needed to study himself a little bit better, and he continued mowing and maintaining for this past year, but he's just barely making it right now, so he decided he'd take a gamble and go back out for bid.
And how much do we have on the budget for this service?
Approximately seven... Oh, pardon me?
How much do we have on the budget for this?
There... I... You know, you caught me offhand. I don't... I can't answer. Okay. But anyway, the way the budget's set up, you know, when we go out for bid, we bid half a year, and so the next... Rest of it will come into the following year budget.
Does it say here budget one-hundred-and-thirteen thousand?
Okay, thank you.
How much were we doing last year?
I don't remember.
So he's increased...
One-hundred-and-thirteen thousand?
It was budget one-thirteen, now he's asking one-twenty-five?
Right, and that budget pretty much is involved with all of our contractual work, our palm tree trimming, and any outside contracting, whether we're working with our lights that are contracting.
And if I may, it varies. So obviously, because of costs, we've... At one year, we expensed about ninety thousand. Last year was over a hundred thousand. It just depends on... We have added areas to mow, and that has increased the cost, and that's why we see a fluctuation of cost, but it's an average of anywhere from ninety to one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand.
Yes. Just this past year, we increased the right-of-way areas along Military Highway. When Killam came in and took over for Hunt Development, they brought a new set of contractors, and they... Hunt Development has been maintaining like Military Highway anyway. They will maintain a portion of it, but they gave a good portion of it back to us. Also, on Anseldo's Highway, right before you get to the bridge, there's some right-of-way areas over there. There's some brick pavers that need to be maintained, and also planted areas inside there.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Move for approval?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to authorize to solicit for bids for right-of-way mowing and maintenance services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to go into the approvals and authorizations, and the first item is number thirty-three, preliminary plat approval for Las Misiones de San Jorge subdivision.
Number thirty-three is the preliminary plat approval for Las Misiones de San Jorge subdivision. This is a forty-eight-point-seven, forty-four acre tract of land, more or less, out of lots nine-dash-five, nine-dash-six, ten-dash-six, ten-dash-five, out of West Edition to Sherland. It's currently zone R-two duplex fourplex. The developer is Cape Investments LP and the engineer is Isaguirre Engineering Group, LLC. The subdivision is located along the south side of Military Parkway approximately four-hundred feet west of FM ten-sixteen or Conway Avenue. The developer is proposing one-hundred-and-twenty-six duplex fourplex residential lots. They will be complying with city utilities. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. Staff is recommending approval subject to payment of capital sewer recovery fees and park fees, provide water district exclusion, and comply with all other format findings. This item is now before you.
Want to approve?
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for Las Misiones de San Jorge subdivision as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Item number thirty-four is the preliminary plat approval for Amber Grove subdivision. This is a subdivision of a tract of land containing five acres, being a part of a portion out of Lot forty-two. Bellwoods Company Subdivision C. This is currently zone R-two duplex fourplex. The developer is Real Estate Investments LLC. The engineer is Melton and Hunt Inc... Oh, I know him. The proposed subdivision is located one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven feet north of the intersection of Mile Two North and Trosper Road. The developer is proposing fourteen fourplex lots and one detention pond. They will be having a city utilities. PNC and staff recommend an approval subject to payment of capital sewer recovery fees, payment of park fees, water district exclusion, and compliance with all other format findings. This item is now before you.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat of Amber Grove subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. And just a full disclosure, the developer's name is Real Estate Investments, but that's not me. Just so you know. All right, number thirty-five.
Item number thirty-five is a final plat approval for Sandero Phase Two subdivision. This is a re-subdivision of seventeen-point-nine, forty-two acres of land out of the south in Aporcion Forty-two. It's currently zone PUD, five-unit development. The developer is Roat Development, Inc., and the engineer is Melton and Hunt. The proposed subdivision is part of a master plan located approximately eighteen-hundred feet east of Schubach Road on the south side of Mile One South Road. The developer is proposing eighty-one single-family residential lots. They will be complying with city utilities. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. PNC and staff recommend approval subject to payment of capital sewer recovery fees, provide water district exclusion, and comply with all other format findings. This item is now before you.
I'm going to approve.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the final plat approval for Sandero Phase Two subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Next item.
Item number thirty-six is a final plat approval for Hidden Hills Estates subdivision. This is a subdivision of thirty-nine-point-one-eight-eight acres out of lots nine-dash-three, twenty-dash-three, and twenty-dash-four out of West Edition to Sherland. It's currently zone R-two duplex fourplex. The developer is Luis Valencia, and the engineer is Melton and Hunt, Inc. The proposed subdivision is located approximately four-hundred-and-eighty feet south of the intersection of North Holland Avenue and Business eighty-three. The property is currently open with a proposed use of forty-seven multifamily lots and one detention pond. They will be complying with city utilities. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. Staff recommends approval subject to payment of capital sewer recovery fees, payment of park fees, water district exclusion, and compliance with all other format findings. This item is now before you.
I'm going to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the final plat for Hidden Hills Estates subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item.
Chief Torres, Mission PD. The next item is authorization to purchase uniforms and police equipment from Galls through buy-board contract six-oh-three-dash-two-zero, not to exceed one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand during this fiscal year. The Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to purchase uniforms and police equipment to equip our police officers, SWAT officers, K-9 handlers, telecommunications officers, and detention officers. The purchase of the uniforms will not exceed one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand for this year. The vendor, Galls LLC, will be utilized as needed to purchase uniforms and items for state-award... awarded contract or grants the remainder of the year. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Okay.
I'm going to approve, but you're going to need a budget amendment, right? You only have what, forty-five thousand?
Yeah, no, we're good, sir. We'll pull money out of the forfeiture account.
More to approve?
Second. There's a motion and a second to authorize a purchase of uniforms and police equipment by board contract number six-zero-three-dash-twenty, not to exceed one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next item.
Mr. Benson.
Look, I have before you item number thirty-eight, which is approval to purchase playground equipment via state-approved buy-board vendor. Staff is seeking approval to purchase playground equipment from Extra Play, Inc. via state-approved buy-board contract number six-seven-nine-dash-two-two. This is for... The purchase is funded in part from grant proceeds from Texas Parks and Wildlife Department with a one-point-five-million-dollar fifty-fifty grant match. Total cost of delivered equipment is one-million-one-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and sixty-three cents. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Want to approve?
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to purchase the playground and splash pad equipment via state-approved buy-board vendor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I come before you to present item thirty-nine, approval of Resolution Number eighteen-fifteen, determinate public necessity and granting authorization to exercise the use of eminent domain authority to acquire certain real property, given notice of an official determination to acquire said property described generally as zero-point-zero-zero-seventy-two of an acre tract of land situated in the city of McAllen, Texas, out of Lot One, Taylor Heights subdivision, as recorded in volume forty-six, page one-eighteen of the map record, Seadale County, Texas, for the public purpose of completing the Taylor Road Phase Two construction project, parcel thirty-seven. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Want to approve?
Second.
Mayor and Council, as per your state statute, this...
Mayor and Council, as per your state statute, this requires a specific motion and a roll call vote.
The motion is, I put the motion exactly on the bullet points.
Specific motion.
I move that the city of Mission authorize the use of power of domain to acquire point zero seven seven two of an acre tract of land situated in the city of McAllen, Texas, out of lot one, Taylor Heights subdivision, as recorded in volume forty-six, page one eighteen of the map record, Seidale County, Texas, for the public purpose of completing the Taylor Road Phase Two construction project.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve resolution eighteen fifteen with the motion as read. I'm gonna call for a hand vote or a individual vote. Ms. Jessica, how do you vote?
Yay.
Mr. Plata?
Four.
I'm voting four.
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 Four, so that is a five zero vote. Thank you. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item number forty, approval of resolution number eighteen sixteen, determining a public necessity and granting authorization to exercise the use of eminent domain authority to acquire certain real property, given notice of an official determination to acquire said property described generally as point zero zero seventy-two of an acre tract of land situated in the city of Mission, Texas, out of lot thirty-six, Woodcrest State subdivision, as recorded in volume forty, page seventy-six of the map record, Seidale County, Texas, for the public purpose of completing the Taylor Road Phase Two construction project, parcel fifty-four. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Want to approve?
There's a, there's a specific motion that needs to be read. No. On this one, as well.
I move that the city of Mission authorize the use of power of eminent domain to acquire zero point zero zero seven two of an acre tract of land situated in the city of Mission, Texas, out of the lot thirty-six, Woodcrest State subdivision, as recorded in volume forty, page seventy-six of the map records in Hidal County, Texas, for the public purpose of completing the Taylor Road Phase Two construction project.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve resolution number eighteen sixteen as read. This is also gonna require a hand vote or an individual vote. Ms. Jessica, how do you vote?
Four.
Mr. Plata?
Four.
I am voting four.
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 Okay, there's a five zero four vote, so it's unanimous. Next item.
Mayor, if I may just ask a question of legal?
Yes.
On seeing as how we're gonna be acquiring many parcels along Taylor Road for Phase One and Phase Two, is there a mechanism by which the council could approve a resolution for the project as a whole, or no?
You could. It's just my understanding at this point, there have been some that have already been approved and some others haven't. But the next time, actually, I think these are the last, there's maybe like three or five left.
Okay.
That we're trying to execute eminent domain on. The others have been, have been, have been acquired already without eminent domain.
Got it.
That's, that's, that's the rub, is knowing which ones are gonna
Understood.
Be acquired by purchase and which ones are gonna be by domain.
Thank you.
So if I may add to that, there's approximately seventy-one parcels on Phase Two. Phase One is already completed on the right-of-way, which Mr. Perez just presented on his PowerPoint presentation. We started construction already, moving utilities on Phase One. This is Phase Two from Business eighty-three to mile two, which is approximately seventy-one parcels, about seventy percent already acquired. There's some in condemnation that Mr. Victor Flores is working on with the attorneys and these are the ones that we need to move forward and try to lay this project to construction at the end of this year.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Item number forty-one seeks authorization to accept a grant award from the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation for the collaborative grant program. The city of Mission Parks and Recreation Department has been awarded a grant from the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation in the amount of five hundred thousand for the purpose of constructing a four point five mile outdoor recreational trail that will support safe bikeways and connectivity efforts among multi-jurisdictional trails. The grant has no match requirement and for geographic references, the trails proposed to run from, from west to east on the south side of town and that'll run through South Conway, South Bryan, all the way to South Sherry. And the idea is that we would try to connect these trails for better quality of life all the way to McAllen and hopefully all the way up to FAR with their trails. And so this grant would allow us to move forward with that construction. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Second. Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments before?
Congratulations.
That's amazing, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor to accept the grant award from the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation of five hundred thousand dollars, say yes.
Aye.
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 Okay, all opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously and congratulations, this is great news. Thank you.
Chief Torres.
Hello, Mayor.
Yes.
Council, City Manager. We're requesting authorization to purchase three police vehicles, which will consist of one twenty twenty-three Ford Explorer, two twenty twenty-three Ford F-150s, police responder trucks, and will be purchased with grant awarded by the Governor's Homeland Security Grant Division, grant number three seventeen twenty-nine oh seven. These three vehicles will be utilized for operations dealing with border security Stone Garden Grant. The total amount of this expenditure is a hundred and forty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-five cents. There's no impact to our taxpayers.
Want to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the purchase of three vehicles via the buy board contract six zero one dash nineteen, the expenditure for a hundred and forty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-five cents. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is authorization to purchase type-one ambulance from Sidtons Martin Emergency Group.
Mayor, City Council, good evening. I have before you item forty-three, authorization to purchase a type-one ambulance from Sidtons Martin Emergency Group. Purchase ambulance with maintenance package from Sidtons Martin Emergency Group utilizing ARPA funds. It'll be a twenty twenty-two Demir's F-450 type-one ambulance. The total purchase cost is three hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and thirty dollars via HGAC, contract ten dash twenty. Staff and city manager approve.
Okay. Is there any discussion or motion?
Mayor, I have a question, if I may.
Yes.
So when we say we're utilizing ARPA funds, have those already been designated for the purchase of this third, this is to be the third unit, correct?
Third unit, yes, sir.
And have those funds been designated already for that purpose?
I can answer. So the question is that we originally had, when we allocated the funds for the ARPA funds, the third unit was not budgeted at the time, so we had to reallocate some funds from our existing allocations that have not been expensed or utilized to appropriate funds for this, the purchase of this. So, so we reallocated from another line item for the cost of this project.
And so when we say we reallocated from another line item, it's a line item that we have decided was something that we were gonna utilize the ARPA funds and now we're saying we're gonna take away from that one to give to this
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
And do we know what, what item?
Yes, so one of the larger items that we have allocated was the, was the SCADA systems for our water towers. That's the technology system that monitors the water levels and pressure. And so we were anticipating updating, upgrading our water syst, water tower. And so we eliminated most of those projects to accommodate for this purchase.
And, and Chief, I guess my, my, my question to, to you as, as the chief, right, I mean, are we, I know we have two units, we haven't gotten the second unit in yet, right?
No, sorry, it did come in, came in two weeks ago and today we got the good news that it is licensed and ready to
It's still in FAR with the
Yeah, no, it came back, we got it back
But with the radio system
Uh, it's going in Thursday.
Yes.
But it's got its license and
So it's ready to operate?
Few odds and ends left, but yes.
And, and I guess my, my reservation is really, if, if we're gonna, if, so we have two units and do we have the personnel for the second unit? Like as soon as we get that one and it's ready to go?
We have students that are pending their national certification testing to become paramedics. That part is, they're in process, within the next couple of weeks, they should be testing. March twentieth, we have two paramedics in the cadet class learning to be firefighters. They previously paramedics already. They'll come onboard or out of the academy late March, early April.
And so as soon as, as soon as they're graduated, is there like a, a certain period of time in which they can't be operating these units on their own? Like is there a training?
Yeah, there's a little bit of an FTO, just to make sure they're gonna follow our standards and, and our protocols and that type of thing. One of them already has, he's already gone through that training, so as soon as he, basically as soon as he comes out of the academy, he could actually get on the truck. He's already, he was hired before the academy, so he already went through all that.
And so, so the second unit will be fully operational as soon as we get it?
April-ish, start first week of April-ish or so.
And then if we get this third unit, when will we be ready to operate this?
That one won't come in till May, April, May, late April, early May. Then there's the Striker package, which is the heart monitor and stretcher and Lucas machine, that some of those items are kind of pending, but by the time all those come in, we should have those other paramedics up and ready.
And when you say up and ready, ready to operate?
Tested, passed, and gone through their, their training program with the paramedics we already have on staff to follow the protocols and
So by May, we should have the personnel needed to operate three units?
Fingers crossed, yes, sir.
I'm sorry?
Fingers crossed. They gotta pass.
And what's plan B if they don't pass? Re-test? 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 Yeah, you can retest.
Yeah.
Mayor, I kinda like, Randy, personally, I don't like the fact that we are allocating, I don't know what we were allocating, I would like to see how much money is still available on the ARPA funds, what is it that we still need to expand. I would like to see the budget before I'm, before you give my approval on this.
Do you wanna comment that, that ambulance is reserved, right, for the, for the fire department and if we don't accept it, it would be
We have not signed any paperwork yet. It's a good faith gentleman's agreement. Right now they're holding it for us until you all approve, we can sign the paperwork.
Till another one would be ready?
Thirty, uh, no, thirty-six to forty-two months away.
Okay, so almost three, three years.
Three years.
Three plus, three, three and a half years.
Here we don't get this one?
If we don't get this one.
We all, we need to, we need to remember that, that what we're spending this money on is on public safety. And I think that we all agree that public safety is probably our biggest priority, or I would say. So that we're reallocating money from other line items to, to address our public safety, I think that's, that's something that I would be okay with, definitely.
And with all due respect, Mayor, I agree with that a hundred percent, but I really would like to be informed when we making a change like that.
Well, I think Randy
I did not know about it. I didn't know what we were changing.
Now, I have, I do have the report that I can issue to the, the council
Yes, but I would like to receive it before they bring it up to us. It's because you're really moving money from one area to the other and I think as a courtesy, let us know what is it that you changed. I don't like to just be moving money around without being very clear. That's my only thing. I know we need it, but I think if you let me know what is it that we are not purchasing or what is it that we are sacrificing or for this, I mean, I, I think it's very much appreciated.
I think Randy can answer that question.
You know, and like I mentioned earlier, was, is that, that we are, you know, reallocating those funds from the, the SCADA systems for those water towers. That's where we're removing those, those monies to be able to accommodate for this.
You will only give my vote because, I mean, yes, I understand it's forty-two, thirty-six months to forty-two months, but Randy, for next time, for me, I don't know how the rest of the council, I need clarification, what is it that's affecting? Cause we have a budget as it's been approved, the ARPA funds have been approved, so what is it affected whenever we make a change?
Mayor, I have a question for Chief Williams. Will this include equipment also or it's just the ambulance?
My understanding, some of the equipment, the power loader and that is already in that unit, so it's yes and no. The cot, the life pack, heart monitor, the Lucas, the actual medical equipment, the bandages and that stuff, we will still have to purchase.
And how does this ambulance compare to the last two that we already have?
Uh, it's identical.
Okay, so it's gonna be like the best service of, you know, how you all explain the rates of the different?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And, and Mayor, if I just may make one more comment, I'm, and I agree with the mayor, I agree with her sentiment with regards to public safety being a top priority and it is. I just wanna be sure that we're not spending recklessly with regards to having units just to have them. I don't want our units collecting dust. If you're telling me as the chief that when we get this unit, we're gonna have the personnel to operate it, then I support it, right? I mean, if you're the chief and you're saying that we need this and this is, and it's gonna be ready to rock and roll when, once we get it, then, then I support it too. I just wanna be sure that we're not rushing into something just because we're told, well, if we don't get it, it's gonna take another thirty-six to forty-two months. I mean, we've been told that before and we get units somehow available to us, right? And so I just, I, I just wanna be sure that we're ready to rock and roll because I, I do, I want a public safety, I want a fire department that has everything that they need. I'm all about that, just like a mission police department. They should have everything that they need. And if this is something you're saying we need and we're gonna be able to operate it, I'm, I'm on board, a hundred percent.
If, if I may add to that, I do have, the, the, the chief was, was mentioning the additional personnel, so we, we currently have, you know, three shifts in our fire department that also handles EMS. And so we look at, right now, we're currently working and staffing it with an MICU, which that means there, there's always a paramedic on the unit. And so right now, we are currently at, we have three paramedics that we currently have, like the, the chief mentioned, four are pending a test to, to be, hopefully they're successful and they pass the test for, to become paramedic. One of the, additional to that is one deputy chief that is also going through paramedic school, that is also eligible for testing. And so we also have the fire, the two fire cadets that are paramedics already. And so those paramedics will be, those fire cadets would be graduating from fires, fire academy and all be available for the April deadline that the chief mentioned. So that would put us at nine total, nine paramedics. So with the, with that, by the end of April, it will have nine paramedics on staff. That's, that's at a minimum level for each unit, assuming that we do have the three. That's one per shift for each of the units to have on staff. Now, moving forward, something in the future that we are also anticipated, we, two of them started, three of them started paramedic school today. That's a section, those three are scheduled to complete in August. We have one, one firefighter that's in a hybrid course, paramedic, and one captain, and those are scheduled to be in September. Those are online courses that are currently being, they're online, in-person courses. Those are in September. And then we have two that are in a academy through TSTC. Uh, those are in September. And then we have two that are in a academy, uh, through TSTC that were already enrolled prior to us hiring them as firefighters that will, uh, scheduled to, uh, graduate, finish in December. So with those, August, September, December, we'll have six additional, um, uh, paramedics. That'll put us at fifteen, uh, by the end of this year. Fifteen paramedics to be able to, uh, you know, man the three units if that is approved moving forward. Uh, as, as that now, as far as, you know, uh, additional personnel, you know, whether that is, is required for us to be able to have some room within the three units. That's something that, uh, we will be discussing, uh, you know, in the future and, and for sure during our budget workshops. Because in order for us to have that, uh, room for, uh, you know, vacation, sick leave and so forth from those paramedics, if we wanna maintain an MICU unit at all times, we need to add additional personnel at that point. So, so that is also something that, you know, to consider because we are staffing them at MICU at all times. That means a paramedic is on board at all times. And so, um, you know, at the end of March, April, uh, we will have the nine. Again, that's minimal staffing for all three units, assuming that the third unit is approved. Fifteen by the end of this year. Uh, but we will need additional, uh, personnel so we can have that availability of flexibility between, uh, individuals being, uh, out for, you know, personal reasons or vacation or whatever the case is.
Mayor, may I ask, uh, Randy a couple of questions?
Yes.
I just wanna see a plan for the overtime. That's, uh, something that, you know, we don't have it in the budget and where we're gonna be with that. And then also, um, my second question would be about the billing. You know, for a while we were waiting on, uh, billing Medicaid and Medicare. How has that been and have we gotten anything back?
Yes, um, so we, we have billed, um, currently right now, there's still, um, Medicaid is still not, uh, processing payments. Uh, that is the longest process. And so we've billed approximately about two-hundred-and-seventy thousand, um, uh, up to date. Uh, but, uh, so far reimbursed is about fifty to sixty thousand from that. And so we are, um, the, the process does take approximately, you know, three to four months, uh, for, for us to start receiving, uh, uh, more, uh, consistent, uh, reimbursements. Uh, finance staff has, uh, acquired access to the, to the billing, um, because we are billing through a third party. And so, uh, finance staff has access, uh, to, um, to oversee and, and monitor the reimbursement, uh, request. And so that, that is something that, well, once Medicaid is, is processed and, and is approved, at that point, we'll, we should be able to see more reimbursements come in. But that's approximately what we've, uh, billed and, and received so far.
Do we have a profit and loss for, for whatever we have serviced and billed?
We, we currently have, uh, just a, an operating estimated budget, uh, for, uh, year one, uh, assuming, you know, uh, expenses in, in the future. Uh, but so far it, it has not been, um, you know, determined the actual profit and loss other than an estimated for the year, year one. Uh, we do have that, uh, uh, ready and available.
Yeah, but don't we should have actual numbers? How long have we been operating?
Yes, we, we do have, uh, actual numbers as far as the, um, those submittals for, uh, billing and reimbursement. That's correct. Uh, the, uh, we did separate one of the, uh, the, what we did is we separated the EMS portion, uh, to, because if you, if you all recall, I mean, uh, this is Firebase EMS, so we are using our firefighters, um, for EMS services. So, uh, we had to separate those expenses because we are sharing salary and benefits with the fire department for that purpose.
So that is, is that a way where you can give us that information?
Yes, yes, we can, we can prepare a report, yes, sir.
I would, Ms., uh, Mayor, I would like a workshop, uh, here soon cause I, I wanna know when are we gonna be ready to, uh, do this like full-time? Like are we gonna have our two ambulances out and we're no longer gonna use Med Care EMS? And the process of, you know, in our memorandum of understanding, are we thirty days with them? Like when are we going to just start Mission EMS?
Okay.
As soon as your paramedics graduate and all that?
Yeah, I think that's still a ways away, uh, in my opinion. Uh, it's, uh, but I do see the need for, to, to continue in the, in the, uh, projection that we're going. Uh, if, you know, I, I saw the, uh, the, uh, call, um, log and, and we're actually having to ask, um, Palmview and, uh, Skyline and, and even I think FAR as well to, to, to serve, uh, our community. Which means that, uh, that means, uh, Med Care has no units in the city and that means that our unit is out. So we're having to go to, to the third and, and fourth line. So definitely the need is there and so, um, I think we're going in the right direction. We just need to move forward cautiously, uh, and I, I think that's the, the right way to go.
So Med Care doesn't have units in the city because of their servicing or because?
They're out somewhere.
Mr. Blata, um, and Mayor and Council, I, I think that there might be some legal issues that I can respond to. Maybe an executive session to answer that question specifically or other questions related to, uh, service responses. Um, but that's up to you guys.
Well, it's cause to me, I mean, I think it's something that we need, but I mean, I think numbers also play a big role. I mean, are we, how are we doing financially with the current unit? I mean, um, I'm like, uh, Councilman Flores, I mean, I just don't wanna buy just for the sake of, I mean, and I understand there is a demand up there and shortage, I guess. I mean, it takes thirty-two, but thirty-six to forty-two months. But also, I mean, I just wanna make sure, I mean, how are we doing financially? And I think people understand that, I mean, are gonna look into those things. And I understand the safety, I mean, I mean, it's very, very important, but numbers are also, can give us a lot of direction.
Okay. But I'm sure, uh, Chief Douglas, I mean, William, sorry, you did your due diligence on looking for an ambulance? Like you just didn't contact one provider, right? You looked around to see what's available out there?
That's an industry standard right now is, and when we started, it was thirty to thirty-six months and it's already jumped another half year in the short couple of weeks that we found out about this ambulance.
And the increase in prices because there's a shortage?
Yes, ma'am. It's our understanding it's in the chassis, the Ford chassis, the Dodge chassis, the Chevy chassis. They're just darn any of them and they're only making a limited number and they're already spoken for.
Okay. Zero.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Good. Is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the type-one ambulance for the, uh, from Sid and Smartin Emergency Group. I'd like to have a hand sign, signal on this, uh, vote. So all in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, it's a five-zero vote. Uh, motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Mayor, City Council, Mr. Perez, Mr. Flores. I come before you, uh, the next two items, item forty-four and item forty-five are kinda, uh, work hand in hand. Uh, item number forty-four is a discussion that, an action and an ordinance that we're gonna, uh, repeal an ordinance that was approved back in April of, uh, two thousand seventeen. And then when we, if when it's approved, we'll go to item forty-five, which will, uh, amend or revise an ordinance that was approved back in September during the budget process. Back in two thousand seventeen, um, when Chief Renee Lopez retired and then Martin Garza, the city manager, then was hiring a, a fire chief, we decided through an ordinance to create the position of the person, uh, directly department, under the department head, which is the assistant chief's position. And at this time, uh, because, uh, the situation we're in without a chief and assistant chief and the process of hiring the chief, uh, and a lot of discussion amongst our Chief Douglas and his staff, uh, which these, there's, uh, decisions affect them more than anything. And I think a lot of conversations with Mr. Perez and with Mayor also, um, a lot of cooperation among staff. We are requesting an item number forty-four to revise or authorize us to repeal section two of the ordinance that was approved back in forty-four in, uh, back in two thousand seventeen, which is ordinance forty-four eighty-seven, which at that time we approved the assistant chief position. We wanna remove that. We wanna repeal that posi, that portion on item number forty-four. And then of course, if that gets approved, go to item number forty-five and, uh, revise an ordinance fifty-two twenty-three that was approved in September on the classified positions. We'd like to create a deputy, an additional deputy chief. I know we're just discussing right now the problems and concerns with, uh, the ambulance service and us going to a Firebase EMS. And I think this deputy chief position would be, additional deputy chief position would be strictly to oversee the ambulance process of us transferring. Uh, we started the process back a few months ago with one ambulance, uh, with three paramedics. And it's, it's a lot of work in progress to get to where we wanna be. But we're hopefully get that second ambulance running and get a, an additional ambulance going. Uh, all the staff that takes to run that ambulance, I think the additional deputy chief position that we're requesting, that the chief is requesting, um, would be very beneficial to them. And that person would be strictly, uh, to oversee that position. With that additional classified, uh, individual, of course, we'd have one for prevention, three that always run the operations at the, at the fire department. And that additional classified position of the deputy chief would be strictly, uh, for the ambulance service, which we know it's a lot of work. So if I answered any questions, any questions, I'd like to go to item number forty-four first. That would be the discussion, action and an ordinance to repeal section two of the ordinance, number forty-four eighty-seven, authorizing the appointment of the person classified immediately below the department head, which is the assistant chief. And we'd like to, um, repeal by removing that section. And therefore, if we approve that, we remove the assistant chief's position. And at this time, we are requesting approval of this ordinance.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just double-edged sword, just throwing it out there. Why wouldn't we consider something like the police department has and hire two assistant chiefs versus removing it? And my question has always been overtime. By creating this deputy, it becomes a civil service issue, right? Because now they're, they get to, as an assistant fire chief or an assistant?
What we're requesting is to remove, to remove that position. It was approved in two thousand seventeen. And at this time, for whatever reason, uh, it didn't work, right? Or it didn't, it seemed to work. That's what, based on the conversation with the chief and his staff and our conversations, at this time, we're requesting to remove that position. Of course, I need do a lot of things. One, you create a test, which is a competitive atmosphere, which is chapter one forty-three under civil service. Uh, you create, uh, not only a test for deputy chief, you create a, a test for captain, a test for lieutenant, a test for engineer. Uh, so there's motion there. But I think they, they feel, uh, this decision affects them more than anyone else, that creating that position, uh, it allows for that individual, one, to take a test and promote. Uh, and that deputy chief would strictly be covering, not that position that we're creating, just that, the position, that extra position would be for strictly transferring us from a fire department to a Firebase EMS, which I think that's where we're going. And you see the problems we're discussing right now is your staffing, when are we gonna graduate? Uh, the billing, all those things are very important. It affects, uh, the budget in the city a lot. And that person would concentrate strictly on that transition, uh, at that time. And of course, uh, the fire department will still have the individual, one deputy chief of prevention, three like it's always had to operate, the fire department, and this extra position would be for the transition. We'd go from four to five. But item number forty-four is one, uh, to revise or to repeal that section two of, uh, ordinance forty-four eighty-seven that was approved in, in, back in two thousand seventeen to remove the position of the deputy chief. The person directly under, I mean, the assistant chief, the person directly under the department head. That would be the first, uh, item that we're requesting.
Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion and nobody has a question, but, um, I just have a question. If after we hire the new chief, if he wants to go ahead and change it back to the way we have it right now? They just need to bring it up to us?
And that's a great point, Mr. Blata, because when he comes in, he'll be able to make an assessment of everything that he's got. Uh, and at that time, I think during the budget process with Mr. Perez and, and cooperates with Mayor and City Council, if he feels that after a few months of him learning the department, uh.
You or she?
Trusting someone on that new chief, he would be able to, at that time, uh, come back to City Council with Mr. Perez's blessing and request that position again.
But Ryan, uh, with the current management leadership, this is what you're recommending?
I think basically Doug Williams, and I think he can attest to that, and I think he's got two other chief deputies here. There's been a lot of conversation, a lot of conversation with Mr. Perez and, and old mayor and, and their staff. That, and again, like I said, this decision basically affects them more than anyone else. And I think they feel that creating this deputy chief's position because of the transition we're at, uh, that it's better off having a deputy chief than, than an assistant chief at this time.
Mayor, I would like to move to approve to repeal section two of ordinance number forty-four eighty-seven, authorizing the appointment of a person classified immediately below the department head as allowed by chapter one forty-three, point zero one four of the Texas Local Government Code.
Second.
Okay, and that would be ordinance number fifty-two eighty-two? Eighty-three? Okay.
Eighty-three? Okay, thank you.
All right.
And then item number five would be, because of the action we just took, and item number forty-five would be?
Let me get a vote on, on, on ordinance number fifty-two eighty-three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Seems I'm always in a hurry, but thank you, Mayor. And item number forty-five is a discussion and action and an ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance number fifty-two twenty-three that was approved back in September during the budget pri, process to revise, uh, the number of clas, uh, the classification of deputy chief. So at this time, we are requesting that we approve the ordinance. And if you look in your packets, a deputy chief's position would go from four to five. The captain would stay the same, the lieutenant would stay the same, engineer would stay the same, firefighter would stay the same. And we'd still have eighty-five and one chief, uh, and with the additional, uh, deputy chief to five would be eighty-seven. So I would requesting is, uh, to approve that so we can add the additional deputy chief position.
Mayor, I'm going to approve ordinance number fifty-two eighty-four.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number fifty-two eighty-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Lerma.
Yes, ma'am.
When will the testing and all that be for staff to move up in the ranks?
Basically with the action that we took today and, and also we had an entry-level exam at the PD this morning also. So, uh, we're concurring with the Civil Service Commission. Uh, I give them dates, uh, and it looks like, and I think Mr. Polo Garza, she will attest to it. I think our meeting's gonna be on Monday, uh, of next week. That's when we agree to meet, uh, with the commission. At that time, we'll start to process, uh, chief, chief deputy, the chief deputy's position. The sources are already in place, so we have ninety days to take the exam.
Cause what if, um, some of your firefighters are, are in the training of the school? Are they gonna have enough time to study and take this to promote? Will that be an issue for some of them?
Under Civil Service Commissioner, basically it's any individual that meets the requirements, which is two years of service in the position under. So that means that any captain has two years of service, they would decide to take the exam at that time or not. It's, we cannot force them, we cannot tell them not to. If they meet the criteria, uh, under chapter one forty-three, we have to allow them to test. What we're hoping for is that, uh, they do test. And, cause it's, it's a, an opportunity to go up, you know, in the department. And it creates a lot of excitement for, at the fire department, just like it does at our police department when there's openings because it allows individuals to move up in their careers.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be within ninety days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is unfinished business. Uh, I don't think there's any unfinished business, so routine matters, city manager comments?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I have a, just a couple of comments. Um, we're continuing the It's Time Texas Community Challenge event. Uh, we are scheduling one for Saturday, uh, this Saturday, February the eighteenth at nine AM at the Mission Event Center at, uh, it's a Zumba. Uh, and that's, uh, open to the, to the public, the community, and it's, uh, free for the, for everyone. Also, we are, um, scheduling a one-stop shop, February twenty-second, uh, at the Mission, um, Seat Building. And that's again, assistance for rent mortgage utilities related to COVID-nineteen. Uh, that is from three to seven, February twenty-second. And, and also, uh, the. And also, the Mission Historic Museum and their nonprofit are hosting a golf tournament, February 24th, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Sherwin Municipal Golf Course. And also, just to remind everyone that City of Mission offices will be closed Monday, February 12, 20th, I'm sorry, in observance of President's State. But we do have staff on call for any unforeseen needs. That's all I have.
Okay. For my comments, I don't think we've had a meeting since we, since the parade, right? This is our first meeting? Yes?
Yes, that's correct. Okay, so I just want to take this opportunity to thank everybody that was involved with the Citrus Fiesta activities. I think it was a, it was a great success. We got lots of positive feedback. We had a lot of volunteers. Thank you, Esther, for volunteering this time around. So I'm really excited about the next year's parade and festivities. So I just want to thank the staff. Y'all are awesome. And so, thank you so much. And happy Valentine's Day.
Yes.
I'll keep it short. I basically want to thank you, Mayor, for having the vision of allowing each one of us to have a float for the parade. I, for the first time, had my mom on the float with me. And so that was an amazing time for us, so thank you. I remember eight years ago when we wanted to start with a float, so it was kind of one of those things like, what? They just looked at me like if I was crazy. But obviously, this Tex Citrus Fiesta, kids have a good time seeing all the different floats and all of that. And I just hope that this is a beginning of just more things to come. Also, kudos to our Parks and Rec Department. I pass by Sherry. And I don't think, Banworth Park is always packed. But now, I see so many children playing at that new playscape. I just hope that the future of Mission is to bring more of those type of areas for children and young adults to play. I think that's just amazing, great work to each and every one. And invite everybody, the general public, to go and visit, because it's one of a kind in the Rio Grande Valley. And so, thank you for that. Be blessed and stay safe.
Also, thank you, Brett. I mean, I had got a lot of good compliments about the park, new equipment. Also, I want to thank Randy, Mr. Terrazas, and all of the Maintenance Department for cleaning some of the intersections on the expressway. Think it's looking nice. I got pictures from residents, from citizens. You know, have seen the people working there. And thank you. And happy Valentine's Day.
I want to say thank you to our Planning Department. I know you guys work hard. And I know you put a lot of work and effort into these items that were on the agenda this evening. It's just, you know, things come up, and we just kind of have to keep exploring. And so I just want to say thank you, Ms. Suzie. I know you work really hard, and I appreciate it. And I know, I also want to say thank you to staff and our JP. I saw JP working out there on the drainage project on Stewart and Glasscock. It's a mess, but it's for the better of our city. And when I say a mess, I mean organized mess. And I wish, you know, there was a better way, but I understand it. And we just have to kind of put up with it for a little while. But in the end, I think it's for the greater good. So thank y'all for your hard work.
I just want to thank the whole staff for all their hard work as well.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks, everybody. We'll move on to executive session. And that's going to be pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. And pretty much, that's it for that section. I'd like to move. There's a motion. And a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Second.
On a second to extend the... All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. First item is an executive session, item number one. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to move forward with the action that was discussed in executive session on the removal of advisory board member. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Mayor and council, based on the discussions in executive session, it's my opinion that if you would like to, to consider a motion to authorize a city to accept payment from the owner of lot nine for the fees due and credit the remainder for the legal reasons discussed in executive session, if it's the council's desire to do so, I would entertain the motion's ad effect.
I so move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to move forward with the consideration and action and to settle the legal matters as related to Business Park Lot Number Nine as discussed in executive session. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Mayor, I move to confirm the appointment of fire chief as recommended by the city manager and authorize the extension of a conditional job offer as discussed in executive session.
Second. There's a motion and a second to confirm the appointment by city manager under Texas Local Government Code Section 143.013 of the city admissions fire chief. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
I move to adjourn, mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor stand up. Thank you. Bye.